I'm going to go ahead and call to order the May 18th, 2015 city regular council meeting and ask those in the audience who would like to join myself in the council in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business, we have two actions under special business this evening. The first is Agenda Bill 7011, Arts Education Month proclamation, and that will be followed by Agenda Bill 7005, Preventing Substance Abuse and Enhancing Mental Health Week, a proclamation there. So I would ask Amy Dukes and Trish Bloor to come forward, please, as I read the proclamation. Whereas the arts, including dance, music, theater, and visual arts are defined as a core subject in Washington State's definition of basic education and considered an essential component of the complete and balanced education for all students, and whereas learning in and through the arts enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination, and creativity, discipline, alternative ways to communicate and to express feelings and ideas and cross-cultural understandings which supports academic success across the curriculum as well as personal growth outside the classroom, and whereas imagination and creativity are increasingly understood as critical capacities needed for success in the 21st century workforce, and the arts can transform our schools into havens of creativity and exploration, places where students want to learn, teachers want to teach, and all members of the learning community are more engaged and motivated, and whereas high-quality school-based arts education involves a wide range of partners, including school boards, district administrators, educators, parents, artists, and arts organizations, community members, and local businesses and organizations whose collective endeavors towards equitable provision of arts learning for all students we celebrate and promote, and whereas we applaud the efforts and dedication of arts educators and advocates around the state, and we call for school and community leaders to continue to broaden and strengthen their commitment to provide arts education for every student in every school. Now therefore, I Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the May 2015 to be Arts Education Month in the City of Issaquah, and I call on our community to join in this special observance and witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 18th day of May 2015. So Trish and Amy, here is a proclamation. Arts certainly does enhance our community and create a sense of place. It's exciting to see art all over our city and for all to enjoy. So with that, I would like to present, Trish, this to both of you. Thank you very much. Amy, do you want to say anything, or Trish, do you want to say anything?
Well, I—
Step right up to the microphone.
Okay. I've lived in this community for, I want to say, over 25 years, and I am just so overwhelmed and impressed with the support that we get from the city to bring arts in here, and due to your support, we're just going to bring more in, and this is going to become an even more vibrant artistic community. So thank you very much.
And now a proclamation, and I would ask—I see Barb Di Michele and Pat Castillo to come up, and Trish, I believe you're a part of this also, so come on back up. So whereas substance abuse and mental health problems affect all communities nationwide, according to the 2013 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, an estimated 24.6 million Americans are currently illicit drug users. Nearly 1 in 4 young people aged 12 to 20 report drinking alcohol in the past month, and 1 in 4 Americans aged 12 or older smoke cigarettes, period. An estimated 22 million people in America are classified with substance dependency or abuse, and more than twice as many adults have a mental illness. The impact of substance abuse and mental illness is apparent in our local community, and whereas with commitment and support, these and other behavioral health issues can be prevented. The focus of National Prevention Week this May is to increase public awareness of and action around substance abuse and mental health issues. Each person has the power to influence the health and well-being of others, whether by supporting someone who's going through a difficult time, participating in activities that strengthen the community, or instilling healthy habits in children from an early age. Taking part in prevention-related activities and conservations helps raise awareness of behavioral health issues and changes lives, and whereas the Healthy Youth Initiative and the Drug-Free Community Coalition initiatives under the Issaquah Schools Foundation strives to spread this message far and wide as one of its primary goals. The hope is that people will become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental health problems and substance abuse, and learn what they can do to help prevent these problems before they start. Whether by being a shoulder for someone to lean on, leading someone to help for a behavioral health issue before it worsens, or setting an example by staying substance-free, we all have a role to play in keeping the people around us and ourselves healthy and safe. Now therefore, I Fred Butler, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through 23, 2015 to be Preventing Substance Abuse and Enhancing Mental Health Week. In the City of Issaquah, I call upon our community to observe this week with compelling programs and events that support this year's National Prevention Week theme, "The Voice of One, the Power of All." And in witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and seal of the City of Issaquah this 18th day of May 2015. And with that, I will present that this certificate to you for the good work that you and all of you do in addressing this terrible problem that faces so many, not only of our young adults, but older folks also. So thank you for all that you do in helping to address this very serious problem. And so with that— I think you did.
This is going to go up to Washington. So we have to smile, please.
And would anyone like to speak?
I have a few words.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Butler. On behalf of the Issaquah Schools Foundation, Healthy Youth Initiative, and the Drug-Free Community Coalition, thank you, Mayor Butler, and city council members for supporting National Prevention Week with this proclamation. The City of Issaquah is actually joining a nationwide effort to prevent substance abuse and mental health disorder, and by doing this, we are showing others that prevention works, and we are supporting our community through health and well-being. To the Healthy Youth Initiative and the Drug-Free Community Coalition are your community initiatives that focus its full-time efforts to ensure our youth remain healthy mentally, physically, and drug-free. The good news is, is that the majority of our young people are doing very well. However, there are still many concerns, so we must remain vigilant. So we, on the Healthy Youth Initiative and the Drug-Free Community Coalition under the Issaquah Schools Foundation, is offering and providing an action forum for youth on May 28th that we would like to invite all of you to. It is the releasing of an overview of the Healthy Youth Initiative that will show, yes, the good news in our community, but also what we need to be looking out for. It will be held at Tibbetts Manor at 7:00, and we have flyers that we will make sure that everybody receives. Behavioral health is essential to health. Thank you, City of Issaquah, for being our partner in this effort.
And thank you for all that you do in addressing this terrible problem. And Barb, thank you, and Trish, thank you. Moving now to audience comments, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening. And I see the city clerk has picked up the roster and is headed back this way. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Thank you. No one has signed up to speak, but I would ask if there's anyone in the audience this evening who would like to speak. Second call, anyone in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak? Seeing no one then, audience comments are closed, and we'll now move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share that last week when I was representing Issaquah with the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Committee, the governor's announcement of the statewide drought emergency was made, and Cascade quickly responded with information assuring us as members of Cascade Water Alliance that our drinking water supply is not affected and will be fine, and everybody felt confident if someone was concerned and wanted further information, they can go to the Cascade Water Alliance website. The URL is cascadewater.org, and there's a news tab on the top. And since that made the front page, I thought I'd share this other side of the story with everyone. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Paulie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next land and shore meeting is tomorrow, May 19th, is a continuation of our earlier meeting in May. We are going to continue working on looking at four of the comprehensive plan elements: land use, capital facilities, economic vitality, and rezones and redesignations. On June 4th, our regular land and shore meeting for June. The agenda has not been set, but there is one item on our agenda tonight under consent that is being referred, and it's AB 6996, and it's a property tax reduction request that would have a public hearing that would come back to the council on June, according to the proposal. The Growth Management Policy Board will be meeting on June 4th at 10:00 at PSRC Boardroom on Western Avenue in Seattle. There is not an official agenda out yet, but Issaquah's Growth Center designation should be coming for its second discussion and a vote whether or not to recommend that to council's approval. One other item on tonight's agenda has come before land and shore, it's AB 6970. So tonight on our regular business, we'll be looking at the Issaquah Middle School applications, and there'll be an outline of the process because it's a quasi-judicial process this evening, but the short story is that the land and shore did look at this back in March, I believe, and remanded it back to the Development Commission for further review, which they have completed, and it's coming straight to the council tonight. It did not come back to land and shore. So we'll have more information about that later. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two reports. The first is that the Council Services and Safety Committee met at 5:30 on Tuesday, May 12th, in the Eagle Room. We had four items in front of us. Agenda Bill 7002, which regards an interlocal agreement at King County on electronic fingerprint capture equipment, was in fact postponed due to further discussions between the city and the county. Agenda Bill 6955, comp plan, we had asked various questions of city staff in the previous session and got a comprehensive response, which we appreciate. Agenda Bill 6989, another interlocal agreement, this one for prosecution, defense, and municipal court services. We voted to bring back to the city. It is on tonight's consent agenda for consideration. And then Agenda Bill 7003, public defense standards, we also unanimously brought back and is on this evening's consent agenda. Then the Sound Cities Public Issues Committee met the next night in Renton City Hall. I will basically direct council to look at two items that I would like to discuss for the good of the order at next council meeting, so you have a chance to take a look at them. The first is the Committee to End Homelessness Draft Strategic Plan. This has been substantially updated with revised feedback from municipalities, including Issaquah and a number of cities, so take a look at that. There is potential future change to that document prior to the next Sound Cities meeting. So prior to the next council meeting, I will make sure—if there are any revisions that have occurred since this document, I will make sure that our council members have them for the conversation. The second item is a proposed Best Starts for Kids levy. Levis are always—we take our taxation authority very seriously, so there has been a substantive first conversation at PIC, and I would be interested in having a further conversation with my fellow council members on this item at the next council meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee will meet this Thursday, May 21st, at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. The agenda that's published on the website lists the first item starting at 6, but we are starting at 5:30 PM this Thursday. The first item on our agenda is 6906, which upon approval of tonight's consent agenda will come before the committee, Cable Television Commission Recommendations. We also have Agenda Bill 6955, which is the committee's continuing work on its elements related to the comprehensive plan update. We have Agenda Bill 6928, upon approval of tonight's consent agenda. Franchise Agreement with Sprint Wireless will be coming before the committee. We have Agenda Bill 7000, which is the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. It's an informational item on the projects in that list, which will then feed into our final item, which is a discussion of 2016 transportation projects and priorities within the capital facilities plan. The meeting is expected to last for a couple hours, and I have one other report to give as well, and that is the Eastside Transportation Partnership Monthly Meeting. We met on May 8th, and we had an approval of spending $5,000 from our vast ETP treasury—I say tongue-in-cheek, but we do have the funds, and that is to hire an organization called CATES, the Center for Advanced Transportation and Energy Solutions, to work with us and develop a technology and transportation symposium. And Councilmember Milligan and I attended a planning meeting last week for the symposium, which was well-attended by other elected officials and our consultants, and we have a date, a Friday, October 2nd, for the symposium. So I would ask if council members are interested, please mark that on your calendars. We're also hoping that staff members from jurisdictions all over the region will be able to attend as well, and we'll be working with the two other sub-area boards, Skateboard and Seashore, in terms of putting this symposium together, and we really expect an outstanding program of speakers and panelists who will talk with us about these emerging issues when it comes to transportation and technology. We're still in the very early formative stages of putting the agenda together, but this is really going to be a spectacular event that ETP will be spearheading the effort on. We also discussed the ETP interlocal agreement with King County, which will extend through 2017 automatically. We heard from the City of Duval concerning transportation projects that they're doing in their jurisdiction, and we also heard from the Puget Sound Regional Council, a presentation with the unfortunately-named title "Stuck in Traffic," and PSRC spoke with us about how delay in the region on our roadways is going to be projected to continue to increase over the coming years, and it was somewhat of a depressing presentation, but the silver lining is that there is still time to take action, both within our cities and as a region, to help alleviate some of these problems and get people moving from point to point. We're hoping next month that Representative Clibbert can join us. She wasn't able to attend in May, but I'll keep you informed of our prospective June agenda. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
No report.
Councilmember Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met last Thursday, and there are a couple of highlights here. First of all, as we've all talked about before, the fire districts are looking at forming a regional fire authority, and so we had sort of a mini-report from the districts, and it was a mini-report because we are having a presentation, a larger presentation, in June at the next board meeting, which is June 11th, and the districts are going to make a larger presentation about regional fire authorities and what direction they're heading and what this potentially means for the agency and the ILA. There have been some questions and some competing opinions about what it means for the ILA, what impact it has, and so we are hoping to have a much larger discussion and many of our questions answered at the next board meeting. The Station 75, the volunteer station, closed last month, and this is just a mini-item. There was an emergency vehicle that, I believe, was stationed at that station. It's now surplus. It happens to be owned by Issaquah. It will be surplus, and a replacement vehicle will be purchased. The title owner will be Issaquah. It's interesting, this is sort of a first-time scenario for Eastside Fire and Rescue. Can't remember the details about why it's a first-time scenario, but anyway, usually it's just a piece of equipment that—we don't need that particular piece of equipment. So it will be surplus, and a different piece of equipment will be purchased, and so our—I think it's an aid car, and that will be converted to something else when that sells. The board also approved the request for a proposal for the fire chief recruiter, and that RFP will be sent to a list of 20 people and firms, and that's just for finding the recruiter, and then a whole bunch more work starts after that. There was also some discussion about partner reimbursement, and apparently there isn't a policy written down in particular regarding how District 10 reimburses the agency for services. There is a practice, and it seems to be a pretty well-followed practice, but there's not a written policy. So the board unanimously passed a motion to begin reviewing the administrative services that the agency provides to each ILA partner to determine which are agency-related services and which are not. And I think that was all for the board meeting. The next board meeting is June 11th at 4:00 PM at Headquarters, 175 Newport Way. Tomorrow, the Finance Committee meets, the EFOR Finance Committee, and that's also at 4:00 at Headquarters. I don't have the agenda in front of me. Oh, I know. We are continuing our review of operational policies and financial policies. That's my report.
Thank you. Council President Winterside.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Wednesday, I'll be attending the board meeting for the Eastside Human Services Forum, and I'm not going to go through the entire agenda, but one of the highlights is Adrian Quinn, who's the Director of the King County Department of Human Services, will be presenting to the board information about County Executive Constantine's initiative titled "Best Start for Kids," and I think all of us, both community members and the council, will likely hear more about that in the not-too-distant future. And just as an introduction from that webpage, King County Executive has announced an initiative called "Best Start for Kids" that will provide the resources needed to prevent negative outcomes in the community and put every child on a path toward lifelong success. By focusing our efforts on early development, carrying forward through a child's journey to adulthood, we can better prevent crisis from occurring and create communities that reinforce their early progress. Best Start for Kids will deliver safer, healthier communities, and a better-prepared workforce. So I'll have more information after that presentation, but just a heads-up, I think all of us are going to be hearing more about this initiative in the near future. That concludes my report.
Thank you for the mayor's report. There will not be an executive session this evening. Deputy City Administrator Emily Moon and I held a neighborhood meeting with residents of three Front Street South condo associations. On May 5th, the dominant topic was traffic. I've been appointed to the Sound Transit CEO Search Committee that will begin working to select a new chief executive officer for Sound Transit with the announced retirement of current CEO, Joni Earl. I visited Issaquah Valley Elementary, Issaquah Middle School, and Issaquah High School during a lunchtime ceremony to present awards for the most successful schools in the Waste-Free Wednesday Challenge that took place across the district on Earth Day. All schools did an excellent job. Apollo Elementary and Cougar Ridge Elementary were also among the top schools. I attended the May 14th Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting. We discussed transit integration and the coordination of King County Metro and Sound Transit long-range system planning. Both of those processes have been synced up to complete at the same time about a year from this July, July of 2016. I commented at that meeting that it was great to see King County Metro and Sound Transit jointly briefing and demonstrating what transit integration means, a major initiative by King County Exec Dal Constantine, that has been a leader in pursuing that, which has been underway for about a year now. I also chaired the Sound Transit Capital Committee meeting on May 14th, and we made a number of recommendations to go to the full board for approval at our next board meeting. With that, and moving to our consent calendar, I would ask whether the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed.
They have.
They have.
Thank you, and with that, I would ask, are there any agenda bills on the consent calendar that any council member would like to pull down to regular business? Seeing none then, what is your pleasure on the consent calendar? Councilmember Winterside.
Before I make a motion, are we going to read it into the public record?
We are.
All right. Here we go. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of accounts payables and payroll dated May 18th, 2015. Item B, AB 6906, Cable Television Commission Recommendation, seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Item C, AB 6928, Franchise Agreement, Sprint Wireless, seeks referral to Council Infrastructure Committee. Item D, 6989, Interlocal Agreements for Prosecution, Defense, and Municipal Court Services, seeks authorization to enter into and execute the related agreements. Item E, AB 6996, Property Tax Reduction Request by way of a public benefit rating system that's in regards to two properties. This sets a public hearing for June 15th. This sets a public hearing for June 15th and refers the item to Council Land and Shore Committee. Item F, AB 6998, Conflux Park Stream Restoration Construction Award. This awards the contract to Pilchuk Excavating. Item G, AB 7003, Public Defense Standards, seeks approval of a resolution, and if approved, this resolution will be assigned number 2015-08. Item H, AB 7006, Amendments to the 2015 Budget. This seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item I, AB 7009, City Participation in Main Street Tax Incentive Program. This is referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. This concludes the reading.
Thank you very, very much. And with that, reading the consent calendar into the record, Council President Winterside?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, Agenda Bill 6970, Master Site Plan and Site Development Permit for Construction of New Issaquah Middle School, a quasi-judicial action. And with that, I will provide an outline of procedures that we will be following this evening for council consideration of both the master site plan and the site development permit applications to reconstruct the Issaquah Middle School. Development Commission held an open record public hearing on February 18, 2015 to consider the master site plan and site development permit. Applications to reconstruct the Issaquah Middle School. The Development Commission recommended conditional approval of these land use applications based on the testimony and evidence provided at the hearing. Together, this information forms the record of the proceedings for the Issaquah Middle School. Final decision on whether or not to approve, approve with conditions, or deny these land use applications rests with the city council. Council will base its decision on the public record created by the Development Commission. No new information may be provided during tonight's hearing, and no public testimony will be taken. This is a quasi-judicial matter, and thus the appearance of fairness doctrine applies. We'll first ask if any council member has any disclosures related to the appearance of fairness. Seeing none, then, on the basis of any disclosures, of which there were none, does the applicant wish to challenge any member of the council? Seeing none, does any other party of record wish to challenge a member of the council? Seeing none, we will use the following process for tonight's closed-record hearing. First, the city will have 10 minutes to summarize the application and develop a commission decision. And the applicant will have an opportunity to address the council regarding the facts of the case. During these presentations, council may ask any clarifying questions they may have. However, no new facts can be introduced. I will close the hearing after the presentations have been made and all council questions have been answered. Council then will proceed to discuss and decide the master site plan and site development permit applications. Council's decision must be reduced to writing. A draft resolution based on the Development Commission's finding of fact and recommendation has been prepared for council consideration. Depending on the council's decision, new findings and a new resolution consistent with the council's decision may need to be prepared for adoption at the next meeting. The city attorney will now go over the criteria the council should use in its decision on the master site plan and the site development permit application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The criteria for approval have been set out in detail in the staff report, a copy of which has been provided to each council member. In summary, they, the criteria are found at Section 18.07.660 of the Issaquah Municipal Code. This is approval criteria for the master site plan. And also, criteria found in Section 18.07.480, perence E. These are approval criteria for nonutility community facilities. Also, as the staff report indicates, there are design standards that are found in the appendix to the city's land use code that the application must meet. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call on Amy Trace, Senior Planner with the Issaquah Development Services Department to summarize the application and Development Commission decision. Amy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm the new Senior Planner. I started with the city of Issaquah on December 1st, 2014. And after being in Washington, DC for eight years, I've moved back to the area and very happy to be back. I'm going to go ahead and start my presentation. First, I'd like to give a brief overview of all the major meetings and public comment processes that were involved with this project, primarily to emphasize all the opportunities we've given the community to get their input on this project. So it started out in August 17, 2013, way before I was employed here. But this project has been a long partnership with this school district in developing this middle school, as you can see with the schedule. And on May 16, 2014, the school district applied for this project and then halted the whole process and then came back a year later in 20, not exactly a year later, but basically almost at the end of the year to resume their application. So on February 18, we had our first Development Commission public hearing. And just as a clarification, we actually had two Development Commission public hearings for this. The second one was on May 6th, just two weeks ago. In between those two Development Commission public hearings, and you're all familiar with this, we had our Council Land and Shore Committee meeting. And also, through that Land and Shore Committee meeting, there were four items that were remanded back to the Development Commission. And I'm going to highlight that very briefly. And so we're here today with this council review and final action. So at the Council Land and Shore Committee meeting, there were four items, as I mentioned, and these are the SEPA-mitigated determination of nonsignificance, traffic mitigation, the blank wall treatment, and parking on Southeast Evans Street. The first one, the SEPA-mitigated determination of nonsignificance, was revisited during the, I'm sorry, the May 6th meeting because during the February 18 Development Commission meeting, it hasn't been officially published for public comment. So we went back to the Development Commission with the finalized SEPA MDNS on May 6th. Traffic mitigation, again, we required the applicant to provide an updated traffic analysis. And in between the first and second Development Commission meetings, we received their updated traffic analysis, and we have identified mitigation for four items, as well as some minor operational mitigation in the interim. The blank wall treatment has to do with a condition that we have attached to the recommendation for approval regarding the four elevations of the building. And during the second Development Commission meeting, all those items were resolved. And for the parking on Southeast Evans, this was new information that was submitted by the school district after the first Development Commission meeting. So we reviewed it as part of the second Development Commission public hearing. Another item that we did bring back is primarily a clarification of the wetland buffer impacts for the expanded bus yard, because there was some confusion as to what is the extent of the impacts, whether it's the buffer or the wetlands itself. So quick overview of the project proposal. You are all familiar where the current high school is, and the future middle school will be in the same location as the high school. And it will be primarily located on the north half of this property. So a closer look at the proposed location shows that currently that site is occupied by Clark Elementary School and Tiger Mountain High School. The future building will be located where the current Clark Elementary parking lot is, and that's actually being used by the high school. This is a phase project, as I've noted in the staff report. Phase one will be the construction of the middle school and scheduled for opening in the fall of 2016. Phase two will be the relocation of Clark and Tiger Mountain to the current middle school site. This graphic also shows you that there are two existing roads that serve the site. The north boundary of the project is served by Southeast Evans. And the more common route to get to the high school, Second Avenue Southeast, is the other So this, the proposal is to build a two-to-three-story school building that's about 130,000 square feet with 39 classrooms and slated for a maximum of 1,100 students. The proposal also includes some open spaces that includes a courtyard between the two wings of the building and some other play spaces and also a front entry to the building. It also includes two play fields, a softball field and a combination track and field and football field. And there are also accessory uses to serve this development or school. That includes primarily the faculty parking, the school bus parking, that's basically an expansion of their existing bus yard. And then there is also a new visitor-parent drop-off and a school bus drop-off that's going to be used by both the high school and middle school buses. So this is just a quick look at the elevation. This gives you a flavor of how the school character, the architectural materials will look. And in my staff report, I noted that they're very similar to the current high school architecture, both in materials and style. These elevations don't show you the revised elevations that include the mitigation for the blank walls, because these were the original submittals. So this is also another elevation. This one faces Second Avenue. However, this elevation probably you won't be able to see it because you do have the two play fields between the Second Avenue Southeast and the actual school building. So staff analysis basically identified several items, major items that were listed in the master site plan criteria. And based on those and also the community facilities criteria, we identified some major items with conditions. And I'm not going to go through everything, I'm just going to highlight some of them. Regarding the compatibility with adjacent uses, given that the surrounding area is all residential, we were, we provided additional conditions to ensure that the building has buffers and setbacks and screening of accessory structures and parking lots to mitigate the impacts on the adjacent residential areas. Vehicular traffic impacts were addressed both through the SEPA review and also through one of the criteria in the master site plan called the cost of improvements, which basically authorizes the city to require the applicant to provide and pay for all the costs of vehicular traffic impacts. And then it also addressed parking and streets and sidewalk improvements. Primarily, we asked for, which is typical, the half-street improvements both for Southeast Evans and Second Avenue Southeast. And for the nonmotorized transportation, we looked at the interconnectivity of the walkways and drop-off areas and also how, to minimize the conflicts between the vehicular and the pedestrian areas, as well as additional amenities such as bike parking and also pedestrian and bike trails. So again, in the staff report, I identified two bike and pedestrian, I'm sorry, two trails, both connecting to the existing Rainier Trail. And two other, three other things, these are more basic stuff. Basically, we also looked at and ensured that all utilities, outside utilities are adequate and that open space is adequate, and the critical areas and associated buffers were mitigated, were appropriate. So in conclusion, in addition to meeting the requirements of the master site plan and site development permit, the proposed Issaquah Middle School project complies with the community facility standards in IMC 1807.07.480, subject to the proposed conditions of approval recommended by the Development Commission. So based on the submitted application and plans, the Administration and Development Commission recommends that the city council approve the master site plan and site development permits with the conditions recommended by the Development Commission. So that concludes my presentation. The one thing I would like to note is that on Exhibit B, we have a typo. This is the city attorney's memo in your packet. The first, the first paragraph, second line, you mentioned the Issaquah High School, but the rest of it referred back to the middle school, so it's just a typo.
And that item was corrected in the packet that's in front of you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for that summary. I'd ask now, does anyone representing the applicant wish to address the city council?
Steve Crawford, Director of Capital Project for the Issaquah School District. The reconstruction of Issaquah Middle School and the relocation of that site, of that school to the Clark Elementary Playfield is a cornerstone of the district's core area projects. That locating the middle school to the high, adjacent to the high school allows for curriculum sharing and the ability to flex student opportunities to enhance student learning. The existing Issaquah Middle School site's pretty tight. There's some facilities there that the existing school doesn't have, in the way of a softball field and parking, et cetera, which are problematic. And that that site is appropriate, or more appropriate, for the elementary school. And that, as Amy noted, that there is a consecutive issue of projects here, and so the timing and the completion of each one of those earlier phases is critical to moving forward with the following phases. And I think when we're all done, we're going to have a much nicer campus for both the middle school, the high school, and for the elementary school, as well as the Tiger Mountain Community High School. So, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. That concludes the presentation. This is coming back from the Council Land and Shore Committee. Mary Lou Pauley, Chair. So would, would you like to make a motion, or should we have discussions and questions, and then you make a motion?
I think discussion and questions makes more sense. And when we're done with that, I'll make a motion.
And discussion or questions? Councilmember Milligan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Amy.
I have a question for Amy. And I know you went briefly over these things, but I wanted just a little more information about two, three items. One is the blank walls mitigation. And in looking at the packet, the language that had been discussed in the past about articulation and design features being required has been stricken and a language that says that the city staff will work with the school in the future to mitigate these. I'm looking at the council packet, page 344. I just wanted to hear a little bit more from you, how this came about and what confidence this language gives the city.
So, these are some of my background information. This was the same slide that we showed to the Development Commission to address the blank wall. It's a little smaller and I apologize if it's not very clear. And this doesn't show you the existing or the original.
Sorry.
What did you want to, here, I can do, do one and show? Okay. And then go back?
Yeah, and then you can just go.
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Here.
This, yeah.
There. So, the original, and I can just walk you through the original versus what is the revised version. These are all the revised versions that address the blank wall. The original elevation design here basically doesn't have this yellow area. It was just, this is actually the gym and this is basically a little bay that protrudes out from the gym. And it was just all wall and then a little hole here for the door. So, what they proposed, and this is consistent to what we originally also kind of recommended, is they have provided a seating area since this is where parents would drop off and pick up children. And it has also a covering, a weather protection. And it's designed to be proportionate in terms of scale and to basically the pedestrian. This elevation is the elevation facing Second Avenue Southeast. The original version has these two blank walls here. And what they are doing is they're providing basically additional basketball hoops. So, this is, this now becomes a more active area where you can do some pickup basketball after school, you know, and so it's an additional amenity. It's not your conventional way of treating a blank wall, but we thought that this is a great amenity for the students. This elevation is the elevation you see from Southeast Evans. So, this is actually the short end of the classroom wing. And then you have here the service area. So, usually service areas are kind of critical in the sense that that's where you have all the different functions that needs to happen, but they're not very attractive. So, one of the things that they did was they actually added more windows and opened this up because there was a big blank wall here. And then they also changed the color, this was actually a sliding door, metal door. They changed the color from yellow to gray to blend better with the existing building. On this elevation, this is basically the face that's the main entry for the faculty and this is where the drop-off pickup area is, when basically the cars and the buses will be over here. So, in this area, they added more windows, both on the first and the second floor. This was originally a big blank wall here, which makes this a more inviting entry even for the faculty. So, that's, so we felt that they adequately addressed all the blank walls of each elevation.
Yeah, thank you. And then I'll hold my questions, see if there's others about this.
Can I follow up on the blank wall?
Yes, please.
So, Amy, I guess what that means is that in the original set of conditions that we received at Land and Shore, the work had not yet been done.
Right.
But now that the work has been done, Development Commission looked at it and said they like it and so the condition is null and clear.
We didn't need a condition, yes.
Councilmember Morris?
I have two questions, but I'll ask one now since we seem to each be doing one question. So, I understand that new information can't be entered. So, I will ask whether during the Development Commission review or subsequently, any discussion occurred about high school parking to build the new facility, student parking for the high school, a section of it was eliminated. And I'm wondering if the high school now meets whatever appropriate standards for student parking and if there were any concerns raised in DC about that reduced parking.
So, we did review that and they do meet, basically, for both the high school and the middle school, there is a minimum required number of parking in the IMC. And they calculated, basically, because it is based on classroom numbers, they do meet both for the middle school and the high school within their site, even with the eradication of that parking. When the high school was built, it exceeded the minimum by, yeah, by a lot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Starting on page 200, it's the Agenda Bill. I wanted to note a correction in case I'm wrong. Tell me. The last, very last line says, "March 2nd Full Council Review." And I believe that that was just, came before the council on the consent agenda and it was referred to Land and Shore. The council hasn't reviewed this at all.
Thank you.
And now turning to three, page 356. S1, SEPA. This is the little paragraph that says, "The school district shall work with the city once the updated traffic study is completed to define the appropriate proportionate traffic improvements necessary to mitigate the operational and safety impacts at the intersections identified in the updated traffic study. Final mitigation measures shall be determined prior to issuance of building permits." Is this still current?
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is, is it common to have this, is it common to have this type of review after the public review and the council has taken action? Because the final, the updated traffic study hasn't even been released. And then after that, the final mitigation measures are to be determined, but all the public review has been done.
So, a little bit of clarification. We created this condition not knowing that we were going back to the Development Commission for a second time. So, this was supposed to capture, at that time, the fact that, given the school district's very aggressive schedule and wanting to accommodate their schedule, we were able to craft this condition based on knowing what the IMC requires and also understanding that the SEPA was, at this point, hasn't been issued and the SEPA public comment process was not completed. And we wanted to make sure that regardless of what happens after the SEPA MDNS is finalized, that we have something that captures the required mitigation. So, having said that, during the second Development Commission meeting, we had more information and we in fact identified more specifically what those four locations are for mitigation. And I don't know if you want me to go through that. So, again, very high level. There, as I mentioned earlier, this project has two phases. Phase one, which we're calling interim for transportation impacts mitigation, pertains to the time when the middle school would be open. And this is basically fall of 2016. And Clark and Tiger Mountain will still be at its current location. So, you basically have all these, four different schools in one side. We anticipated that there will definitely be traffic impacts to, and in this particular case, there are two, oh, I'm sorry. See, this is sequence, the sequence is backwards. So, let me just go ahead and start with the full build-out. For the full build-out, what we're talking about is when Clark and Tiger Mountain has moved to the current middle school. And this is basically the final version of what's going to end up in our current project site. So, there are four, four areas where we identified impacts to traffic and we're talking offsite mitigation. The first one is Second Avenue and Sunset, Front and Sunset, Front, Clark and Newport Way, and this pertains more to the future middle school. And then Southeast Evans driveway entrance. So, in addition to those, now I'm going to talk a little bit quickly. For the interim phase, we identified Second Avenue Southeast and Southeast Evans and Second Avenue's, the signalized entry at Second Avenue. For the interim phase, recognizing that this is a one-year event and the impacts will be temporary or short-term, we were looking more for operational mitigation. For the full build-out, we're looking for a combination of probably physical improvements as well as financial contributions.
Okay. Amy, have those been written down somewhere? So, those are in the review?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation. And I think that, I also specifically asked whether this is, this is typical to have the, so the mitigations aren't determined yet. We've determined locations, but not actual mitigations. And I'm, so I'm wondering, is it typical to have the, the traffic study's not done yet, that I understand?
The traffic study's done.
Oh, okay, so this isn't?
And that's, that's how we were able to identify these intersections and the types of mitigation.
Okay. The final mitigations haven't been determined and I'm wondering if that, if we normally do that, is that the normal process to have that determined after all the public review has been done?
So, since I'm new here, I don't have a history of how staff had handled this in the past and I'll have Sheldon Lynn talk about that a little bit more.
Thank you, Amy. I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. And to answer the question about the mitigations, whether they've been identified in more specificity, the answer is yes, they have been. I can talk real briefly about them and these were discussed at the Development Commission meeting. At the intersection of Sunset and Second, that is going to be a signalized intersection as part of the mitigation. A proportionate cost share for the intersection of Front and Sunset towards the city's capital project that it has on its capital program, proportionate to the district's impact of that intersection for the, essentially, the change in traffic flow patterns that occur as a result of the moving the schools around mostly. Front-Clark-Newport intersection, the primary delay was on the east leg, on the middle school side, on the east side of the front street. And there'll be additional right-turn pocket or some other access point provided to the east, undetermined yet specifically what that is. But as the design of the middle school remodel occurs, that'll be evaluated, what's the more appropriate mitigation at that spot. But it's clear that there's a couple alternatives that are available there. With regards to the operational ones, full build-out, Southeast Evans driveway, the school district's provided actually a gate to prevent the issue from occurring if needed as part of their onsite circulation. The intersection of Second and Evans during the interim period has a high volume of traffic that necessitates the striping of the existing Evans Street as it approaches Second to create a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane. And then operationally through demand management for transportation and the like to help mitigate the signalized queuing issue at their main entrance to the high school. So, they have been done. The analysis for the report and all has been done. We just haven't received the final report in writing yet. But the analysis is complete and it was discussed at the Development Commission meeting.
Okay. And what says, "Final mitigation measure shall be determined prior to issuance of building permits." What part of that has yet to be determined?
The actual details of phasing, configuration, things like that at the Sunset Signal. I spoke about the Clark-Newport one. There's a couple alternatives, both of them work. And then the exact value of the proportionate share of Second and, not Second, excuse me, Front and Sunset. The operational ones, we still need to work with the district on operational ones for how they're going to deal with their transportation demand management.
So, you determined mid-level, but not details and not cost sharing, specific costs?
Yes.
Is that, is that typical? I'm just...
In instances like this, we have taken the opportunity to do this in the past, knowing that we're very close in an order of magnitude of where we need to be. The applicant is willing to work with the city in the future. So, yeah, we have done it in the past.
This is consistent with the way it was handled at the high school. We were at the same point where the specific mitigations had been identified but not designed in detail, which is fairly typical of a land use permit. We understand the concept and the needs and the means for mitigating, but the specific design of the signalization at Second and Sunset, for instance, has not been designed.
And so, all of those details that you just talked about that have yet to been, to be decided, it says, "Shall be determined prior to issuance of building permits." That is what we would be adopting?
So, what we have, what we have done is identified what the mitigations would be and that in a typical manner, we're going from the land use permit, which identifies those specific actions that are necessary into a construction permit in which they would be designed in detail.
Councilmember Barber, followed by Council President Wintersheim.
Thank you. I have a Rainier Trail question as I'm reading here. It's giving the description, I'm on page 235. Discussing the project and it says, "The final location of the trail has not been determined. However, the building connection will require securing an easement from private property owner east of Second Avenue connecting to the Rainier Trail." Can you speak a bit more to that in regards to where is the trail, where will it move to and what will be the new? And then what kind of assurance do we have that this property owner is actually going to, have we been working with them already in regards to securing the easement?
I'm trying, I don't have my packet with me. Is that the trail east or west of the, which leg of the, because we have two trail improvements.
Well, this is Rainier Trail and it says, "It's currently winding around the school site, forming a U along the perimeter of the school district."
So, just a little bit of, okay, thank you. Okay. So, this is actually the, I'm going to try to use this. I don't have the exact slide for that. So, the current, the current Rainier Trail follows along here. Okay, that's good. My cursor is showing it. And what I was pertaining to in that particular paragraph is that we are actually requiring them to provide a trail connection from the skateboard park to Second Avenue at the intersection of Evans, somewhere close to the intersection of Evans and Second Avenue. So, and in fact, I think the clarification there is that the area where the final trail will go is actually city property. will go is actually city property. And we've already met with our park staff and had them review the proposal and come up with basically some of the more specifics on exactly, you know, the details of how this trail will be constructed.
So those details have not been worked out because now it currently comes from the skate park south. But then is it going to, is the intent then to go down Evans?
So it's actually going to be a double, in other words, this is in addition to what's already there right now. So we will be having, instead of a typical six-foot wide sidewalk, we're going to have a 10-foot wide shared use route for Second Avenue.
For Second, but not on, not from, coming from the skate park?
It will be consistent. It will be 10 feet, yes.
That's a definite widening of Evans Street. What are we widening in that road to?
The current Evans Street?
Yeah.
It's not Evans.
Oh, I'm sorry, Second Avenue.
Yes.
It's going down south on Second Avenue.
Okay. Then what is the, so it's saying in here then, "Building the connection requires securing an easement from private property owner east of Second Avenue." Okay. Thank you, that's my clarification.
Thank you. Question about trip generation on page 367 of the packet or page 168 of just the Agenda Bill under, in the section on, it's Exhibit 17. In trip generation, it says, "Trip generation for build out, we're estimated by applying existing peak hour trip generation rates to the future planned student capacity." So my question is, what is the definition of peak hour trip generation? And is it the same peak hour that we considered when we did concurrency?
The peak hour trip generation was evaluated for not only the concurrency hour, which was the PM peak hour, but also at the time in which the schools generate their peaks. So they actually did what you would consider kind of multiple peak hour evaluations because some of their impacts were due to changing bell times at different locations, which generated trips differently and actually altered the peak flow of traffic at some of the intersections I spoke about earlier. The primary focus was at the times in which school was, people were coming to the school or leaving the school. Pickup, drop-offs, things like that at the school bell times.
Okay, good. Actually, I'm very glad to hear that because 4:30 to 6:30 would have been an odd time for us to be looking at traffic impacts for a high school. And, and does it, but because it uses that language, trip hour, peak trip hour, and is that I believe the current enrollment of the middle school is around in the 700s you just described it, it wasn't the same definition we use of concurrency. Is this, is this, is this fall under concurrency? and this is a planned capacity for 1,100. Are these concurrent, are these are just SEPA or is this true concurrency impacts? And so I just assume there's going to be more trips.
Concurrent is under the current system, which is a impact fee, and they will pay The trip calculation was converted into the square footage to calculate the impact the impact fee. But these are some more SEPA operational and safety issues that are associated with their school operations.
So when you say current, you mean the one we just adopted?
fees due under the concurrency ordinance. And so the report doesn't contain the specific trip number, but order of magnitude of impact The recently adopted one, yes.
Recently adopted one?
Yeah.
Okay, so none of these are, there are no trip, what are, what's the hit against
fees associated with the concurrency that was recently adopted is on the order of about
the trip bank?
I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
Christopher, do you know what the trip bank is? Yeah. I don't have an answer for that question.
$145,000 based on 17,000 square feet rounded off of building area proposed.
Okay. And so perhaps in the future we'll learn about the hit to the trip bank?
Yeah, yeah. We'll definitely give you an update on the trip bank.
I have other questions, but I know we want to give everybody a chance to talk first.
Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll, I'll take the same tack because I have a list of items as well. And fortunately Stacy already got one of mine, so it's working out. While we're on the subject of trip generation and so forth, when we look at private industry coming in on this sort of scale, we usually require a CTR plan, commute trip reduction. And, you know, we're talking about trails and we're talking about bike facilities and additional pedestrian access. I don't remember how many kids when I was in middle school actually biked to school or not, or if we're expecting parents to bike with their children on their backs or something. So I'm sort of looking at vehicle trips. And then, you know, we've got bus trips coming in there as well. And so what, what are the steps that are proposed to be taken for reducing the reliance on single occupant vehicle trips? In other words, encouraging students to ride the buses or encouraging car pools, preferential carpool parking, something like that that would really incentivize and provide some form of CTR for this facility?
Okay. I'm going to let Amy speak to that.
So we customarily work with the Office of Sustainability in creating each project's CTR. And I can only speak generally and about it in terms of looking at, you know, different modes and you've, you know, you've recognized that. So at this point, and as far as timing for that, we usually wait until the project is close to getting their building permit issued before we develop, you know, a final. And it's usually worked out outside of, you know, the city council or in other situations, the Development Commission review of the project. So we've done that for Isiqua High School. And we've also apparently been doing that for the other projects in the city in the past.
So basically what I'm hearing is it'll be figured out later?
It usually is figured out later.
Okay.
Are there any hints or inklings in terms of what things with the high school would apply in this situation? Like I said, your preferential parking or just reducing reliance on SOVs, just, I don't know. What are there, what are the types of measures that have been implemented that could work here?
The high school has implemented in the past and currently is implementing an enhanced carpool requirement as the number of parking spaces has been reduced. They work with a sign up for three riders to form a carpool. So carpools get preferential placement in the selection process. With a reduced number of spaces, if you have a carpool, you're going to get a space. If you don't, you're going to fall probably short. So you can look at reducing parking spaces as a means to reduce SOV use. And it is, we provide bus service district-wide. Everybody has the opportunity to ride the yellow bus. Everybody has the opportunity that lives close by to walk or ride a bike. Those aren't particularly heavily used options, but reducing parking spaces while still exceeding the required number of spaces is one method. The students are pretty good about, you know, signing up. And as you're a senior, you're going to have a higher probability of having a space. As you're a junior, less so. And if you're a sophomore, you can probably forget it.
So it's a good thing to ride the yellow bus as I did to middle school. And you never know, another person could have the same privilege I did of meeting a future state senator on that yellow bus as kids. Thank you. I'll defer my other questions.
Right. Who's next? So we've gone, so we may be back to you.
Am I next? Is it true?
I'll assume ever. Everybody's had a chance to speak. And does anybody else have any more questions?
I'm going to, I have a couple more, but because we were just talking about trip generation and concurrency, I have a question. And then I have a clarification that I don't know if I can provide this, but the question of concurrency came up earlier and I had asked staff months ago. And I have an answer in an email that I'd love to show, that I was talking to Dave Favor about how this project came outside of, yes, I don't.
So is this new information?
No.
Is this information that was considered, dear, by the, let the?
It was a clarifying question early in the process to staff, directed straight to staff.
Okay, was that part of the record before the Development Commission? Okay.
Okay, that's, it's okay. I think they're going to come up with the answer over this anyway. So my question though regards the document that was given to us in our packet and on page 367, under the same topic we were just talking about, lower down on the page under trip generation, it talks about intersection LOS analysis. And the conclusion there is that two of our intersections would be operating at an LOS of E and/or lower. And I thought that we had an LOS standard of D. And so I wondered how it is that we can anticipate an LOS of E and that that's okay. Sheldon, I can rephrase on page 1, on 367.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I know you're working on some notes.
I had a little hard time hearing, so if you wouldn't mind repeating?
Yes, I'd be happy to. On the same page that we were talking about earlier where it says trip generation in the middle of the page, lower in the page is the intersection LOS analysis talking about Front Street and Sunset and Second and Sunset and how their anticipated level of service drops to an E. And level of F during afternoon peak hour. And that seems lower than our city's standard. So I just needed more information as to why that was okay. In the packet, it's page 367.
The Front and Sunset Way, well, all of these, the levels of service are prior to mitigations.
Oh.
But just a point, Front and Sunset was one of the intersections under the concurrency that was allowed to, I believe, remain at E under the council's policy direction.
Okay. It isn't clear that way when I read it because it says that the study intersections are anticipated to operate at D or better with full build out with the exception of the following intersections. So it's implying that at full build out of the Isiqua Middle School, there will be exceptions, one of which being Front Sunset, which is going to be signalized, and one of them being going to Sunset.
No, I understand what you're reading there, but no, this is prior to mitigations. For instance, the example I'll use is the Front-Clark-Newport that would operate very poorly had we not identified some mitigations for that.
Okay.
260, or 368, it goes on to talk about the mitigation.
Yes, okay. Okay, that's, that's that question.
Thank you. Still on the issue of transportation impact. So I appreciate it, there was a conversation during the Development Commission meeting earlier about, and I haven't been able to watch the recording, I read the minutes. And I, if I wonder if I could just hear those that were present, kind of a characterization of the conversation about priority given to buses versus maybe during drop-off and pickup to, you know, private vehicles. So there was a conversation, do you remember that? So I read the notes about that and it wasn't really clear to me whether or not this design is, is considered very accommodating for cars during drop-off and pickoff or it's less accommodative and gives a priority to buses. What is this design, is it encouraging? So, so I didn't hear the conversation. I was wondering if you, I'd like to hear staff's assessment of it as well. Thank you. Please, both.
So as a part of this project, we're going to have one bus pickup-drop-off area that'll serve both the middle school and the high school. They currently ride the same buses, they would continue to ride the same buses. So rather than have them drop off at the high school, come back out on the Second Avenue, drive up to the middle school and pick up, we're going to generate in this new project one bus loop. There we go.
Right.
So bus traffic will come in off of Evans, come down. This is where the buses stack and pick up and drop off both the middle school kids and the high school kids. So it is located in a location that's central to both as currently configured vehicles for parents, et cetera, will come in at the traffic light, come in, come back up. This is the parent pickup-drop-off area for the middle school and the loop back out and exit back at the traffic light. Personally, I don't see that there's any prioritization or encouragement of single occupancy vehicles because the drop-off is here versus the bus lane being here and the drop-off being here. Particularly in the afternoons when buses arrive early and they all stack, if the buses formed a line across the front here, then every student that's going to get picked up has to cross the line of buses. And the way it's configured now, the pickup-drop-off occurs here, students that are going to ride to the bus will walk around and have access on the sidewalk here and they'll walk around. So we have two controlled crossing points, which we felt was a much safer, much more expedient situation. And to me, it just, I just don't see the prioritization of single occupancy vehicles as higher than buses.
Okay, thank you. And I just noted it was part of the conversation during Development Commission, I didn't watch the video. I don't know if Lucy, you're nodding your head, was there another, I'd just like to hear our staff's own characterization of that conversation.
The public did comment that they felt that it was, created a higher priority for single occupancy vehicles to have the, you know, the weather-covered bench out in this location closer to the building rather than flipping these. So I think Steve Crawford has characterized, you know, a lot, he provided a lot of the description at the time. I think staff's position was that that weather protection and the proximity of the cars to the building did not inherently make that more car-oriented, that it was good to have that weather protection for students who are waiting for their rides. But often in the afternoon, the buses are already stacked out here and students would be getting right on the buses. It's not as if they would be standing in the weather there either.
Okay, and thank you very much. I think that that clarification, and I assume that was shared during the Development Commission as well, and I think that's very important because I know our community is very interested in that. We're very interested in trip generation and so I'm glad to hear of that assessment. I mean, I'm not technical enough to agree or disagree, but I appreciate that characterization. It seems reasonable to me.
Well, can I continue on just before the slide comes down?
I don't know if Lucy, you're nodding your head, was there another, I'd just like to hear our staff's own characterization of that conversation.
The public did comment that they felt that it was, created a higher priority for single occupancy vehicles to have the, you know, the weather-covered bench out in this location closer to the building rather than flipping these. So I think Steve Crawford has characterized, you know, a lot, he provided a lot of the description at the time. I think staff's position was that that weather protection and the proximity of the cars to the building did not inherently make that more car-oriented, that it was good to have that weather protection for students who are waiting for their rides. But often, in the afternoon, the buses are already stacked out here, and students would be getting right on the buses. It's not as if they would be standing in the weather there either.
Okay, and thank you very much. I think that that clarification, and I assume that was shared during the Development Commission as well, and I think that's very important, because I know our community is very interested in that. We're very interested in trip generation, and so I'm glad to hear of that assessment. I mean, I'm not technical enough to agree or disagree, but I appreciate that characterization. It seems reasonable to me.
Well, can I continue on just before the slide comes down? So I understand where the middle school foot traffic is going to be coming from, but where is the high school? Is there dedicated walkway for the high school?
There's crossing points at this point for the high school. Basically, you're going to, if you're getting off the bus for the high school, you're going to follow the sidewalk down, and there's a ramp and a stair at this point, which gets you to the sidewalk that leads right into the main entrance of the high school. So you have walkway on the east side that comes back to this point, as well as the west side that comes back to that point.
Councilmember Marts?
Thank you. I note in the report, or in the materials that were given to us today, it says the Isaguas Sportsman Club gunfire noise can often be heard during school hours, however, the classroom wing is buffered from the noise by the bandroom commons wing. I'm wondering, it's my understanding that the range uses up to .338 Lapua Magnum rounds, which are, which have quite the wallop in terms of noise. These are rounds that can take things out more than a kilometer away. So has, was consideration given for the EPA noise emission standards and whether the new location, and in particular, the bandroom commons wing, will meet EPA noise emission standards in the range with those sort of large caliber rounds?
Certainly, they weren't meant and designed to meet the EPA noise standards, or the HUD standards, or any, you know, recognized standards. That comment that I made on the staff report was simply to say, given that you do have that solid wing before the classrooms, that it helps. But at the same time, I must admit that the noise from the gun club can be heard all over Old Town, so it's more a matter of degree. And this is more anecdotal, you know, I do have friends whose kids go to the high school, and I've asked the kids, you know, doesn't that noise bother you? Because it's almost every day. And apparently, they've gotten used to it. So probably because they're high school kids, you know, they're more low maintenance.
So help me understand, because this is substantially closer to the range, as part of the certificate of occupancy or whatever, does there, is there any point where somebody measures what the sound level is to make sure that there's sufficient sound deadening in those occupied spaces when the range is being used?
So I have worked on other residential projects, and in particular, my experience when I was a senior planner in Redmond, where we did mitigate for, in this particular case, traffic noise. And it's very challenging when you have occupiable space to mitigate the noise, because you do also need ventilation for your units or for your building. So sound finds its way, it's almost like water, it finds, it's sound waves, so it finds ways to get into the building. So there's no realistic way to mitigate for the noise from the gun club.
But there are legal requirements as to the maximum noise level for single events that are allowable for people to experience, right? It's something on the order of 85 decibels or 90 decibels for a single event.
I was just reminded that none of these were in the record, so I'm not supposed to have said that. So I apologize, I guess if we could, and I guess Steve is here to answer your question.
I was just going to say that in or out of the record, I'm not sure, but the sound strategies at the high school have mitigated the noise to the internal areas of the building to a very, very acceptable level.
So again, I'll ask, before occupancy, in the process, is that checked before certificate of occupancy is delivered?
It's something that we're concerned about as a school district, and we'll be working with a design team to make sure that we're going to be compliant. We also have health department review and approval of all of the buildings before occupancy.
Is it checked for noise level? Will it be checked for noise level when the range is being used?
We will check for noise level. It's not anything that we've done before, because it was in the high school, quite apparent that the noise levels were quite within acceptable ranges. And yeah, we understand that it's closer.
The other thing is, I fired large caliber rifles, they're amazingly loud.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we're here.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on that line of questioning from Councilmember Marts. You know, this issue of its proximity, the site proximity to the sportsman's club is very concerning to me, and probably the single most dispositive issue for me on this review. I too am concerned about the noise, not only just the noise, the fact that there is noise, but the type of noise, and that we're going to be putting young teenagers in a situation where they will be hearing gunshots, not just any old type of noise, during their educational experience. That concerns me very deeply. I have a question, though, related to the gun club in terms of the environmental impacts, since Councilmember Marts, I think, adequately addressed the issue of the scope of the noise, the decibels and so forth. Still, I'm not sure about the wisdom of the site. You know, there's been talk about the use of lead in gun ranges and so forth, and I'm really concerned about airborne lead, or the potential for toxicity from the club, whether it's particles that can be carried by the air, and what the ventilation and circulation would be like at this new facility. You know, we're going to have students outside who will be participating in activities, we're going to have students in an enclosed space where they'll be spending a good chunk of their day. And so I'd just like to get some information about, has there been any studies done, or anything you can point to in the record that would allay my concerns with respect to the potential for airborne particles affecting these children, or anything in the record concerning the ventilation and circulation of the building?
You can't really see it too clearly, but the footprint for Clark Elementary sits right here, building built in 1955. Now, the gun range was there since '27, so the elementary was built after the range. But the technology that's been existent in the elementary school is current for its day, current for the times when it's been modernized, but in terms of indoor air quality factors, the new building will be much more efficient. We typically have periodic indoor air quality issues from our various schools, including Clark. And we've done air sampling, and the indoor air quality, every time, has sampled better than the outdoor air quality. As far as lead particulates from the gun range, no, we have not done any specific air sampling. There's been sampling of the ground, and we know that the ground areas that are going to be occupied by students are clean. And the indoor air quality is going to be filtered to current standards, and it'll be a healthy place for students. As far as the noise goes, the elementary students have been working, going to school, playing on the playground, with absolutely no separation from the sportsman's club as far as noise mitigation goes. And that, as far as the internal portions of the building, having the service facilities and music, arts, et cetera, separating the majority of the instructional spaces, does provide some mitigation, much more in terms of the relationship to that that's been existent at Clark Elementary since 1955. So it is an enhancement.
Ray has a comment?
I will say that a number of years ago, there were concerns about arsenic from the plumes from Tacoma, and we've done sampling on all of our sites, and there wasn't anything present in that. I would think that there's far heavier concentrations in that kind of a situation than there would be from lead coming out of the sportsman's club.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. One, everyone needs to try to remember that, as the mayor indicated, the factual record was developed at the Development Commission, and new information cannot be submitted here. So I think the question would be, is there anything in the record dealing with lead? And so rather than, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of information. And I know that you did ask the question that way, but I'm not sure they heard it that way. So, number one. Number two, we have to remember that under our codes for the noise, for instance, it deals with the generator of noise, not the recipient of the noise. The gun club, as been pointed out, has been there for a number of years, and they, if they are violating our noise ordinance, or the state noise ordinance, they would be the ones that would be cited. They may be grandfathered, I don't know what their situation is. I'm not aware of any city code that imposes a duty of a receiving property owner to reduce noise below a certain level from an outside source. There may be, but I'm not aware of that. The final point is, is that mitigation, and this follows from that, the city can only require mitigation for impacts caused by the development. And in the case of lead or noise, those are obviously, what we're talking about here is not being caused by the project, and therefore, the city has limited ability to require the developer to mitigate for something that he didn't cause. So just bearing that in mind, I think the school district has indicated that, like everyone, they're concerned about the health and welfare of their students, but there may be a limit about what the city can do to require things beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Milligan, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Or maybe it's Stacy's second turn. Should I go? What do you want me to do?
Go ahead.
Okay. My question, thank you, Mr. Mayor, regards usable open space, and how it was discussed, the expectation of spaces on the campus that are expected for public use, in particular the trail. And I just didn't find enough information here that showed that, to inform me about how that is assured to be open for public use and not closed because of some school boundaries limiting access to these things. What was discussed about that?
So first, I'd like to identify the two trails, or two proposed trail connections. One is actually outside of the school property, and it will run from, again, as I mentioned earlier, it would start from the skateboard park through the city property, along public right-of-way, all the way down to the signalized entry on Second Avenue Southeast. So that whole 10-foot-wide shared-use route will be in public right-of-way. The other trail, let me try to show it. Okay. So the current alignment of this Rainier Trail connection on the east side actually goes through the city, the school district property, and runs along, this is just a general idea, down here, and then connects back to the Rainier Trail. The future alignment actually allows the trail to be provided along the 50-foot access easement, this is a city-public access easement, and comes down all the way and connects back to the Rainier Trail. So this is, this is part of the Rainier Trail, and it will, it will follow the existing access road and come down this way. So both those trails will be outside of the city property, not city property, but outside any, any potential barriers.
And Amy, is there a trail that goes through the campus that connects the Rainier Trail to the Tiger Mountain that's part of this?
So that's the one that I mentioned, that currently comes through here, and goes, and actually lines back out, and then connects to the, to the park, what we're calling the Park Point, the former Park Point site, or the city's new trail connection.
Okay. Okay, and then related to that is the other usable open space, what's required in this permit for other usable open space for city use? There are other public use required?
Actually, there's no specific ones, but in this particular case, we are, again, in discussing this with the school district, these, these two playfields are also going to be available to the public at certain times after school hours, or the community.
Thank you.
Stacy?
Thank you. Another trail question. This is on page 361. It's D 15 and 16, more references to trail with design paving materials to be further reviewed. As part of the site, the administrative site development permit, and in D 16, working with Parks and Rec to define each party's responsibility in maintaining the trail. My question is similar to the one I had before about traffic mitigation, and is it typical for these, these types of final details and items to be determined after the public review process?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, we're getting down to construction details, and usually, we work that out during the construction permit review.
Okay. Thank you. Page, I'm just going to finish up my list. 363, U 8. This is a reference to, "No clearing and grading permit shall be issued without an approved technical information report and the master drainage report. The technical information report and the master drainage report shall be updated to reflect consistency with the first site-related construction permit application submitted and approved by the Development Services Department prior to issuance of the first clearing and grading permit." This is a little confusing to me, because there's already been issued an early clearing and grading permit, so I was wondering how this squares with that.
I missed the first part of your question. What was that?
So U 8 talks about things that need to be done before a clearing and grading permit? It's U dot eight?
Okay, they've submitted the TIR, yes, and the master drainage report. Yeah, so the, both of those were submitted, and our review had begun. They submitted their site work permit, which is, includes the clearing and grading permit, and we just pulled out a piece of that for the early clearing and grading permit.
And my last question is on page 430, and it may be just a, miss, I don't know, I don't know if I'd call it a misuse of words, but it says, "Staff analysis. The proposal is generally compliant with the master site plan and site development permit requirements." And in other places, it says it meets the requirements of the master site plan and site development permit. So what is, I'm just curious what the generally compliant is supposed to mean?
It simply captures the fact that we do have conditions to make it fully compliant.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. Got one more area to cover. This is on the issue of site and its impact on the environment, but I'm looking specifically at the school buildings themselves. And what, what detail can you provide that's in the record with respect to, and I'm going to use an intentionally vague term here to leave it open for you, but... it open for you, but how green is the building? In other words, what materials, what energy efficiency, what is being done in the architecture of the building to mitigate environmental impacts from, you know, such a large facility with so many people inside it?
Excuse me, a number of years ago, the Washington Sustainable Schools Protocol was developed. It was developed as a means to ensure that schools in the state of Washington and the Pacific Northwest were energy efficient. That process basically compiled the best of LEED and CHIPS, and put together a protocol for schools in Washington. And the WSSP is basically equivalent to a LEED silver, and that's something that we have been compliant with in our buildings even before WSSP was put in place. So the buildings are very efficient, as, I guess it's out of the record, I can't say that. Our buildings have been very efficient, and as we've continued to add square footage, our energy costs have remained, or our energy consumption has pretty much remained level while the costs still have gone up because of unit prices. We have a number of different things that we specify within the building, all the way from recycling of materials, separation of demo materials, certain things that we require in terms of new products, in terms of local sustainability, local delivery, et cetera. So we do have efficient buildings.
And the lighting, does that fall under the same criteria?
Lighting is efficient. The new energy code is ratcheted up quite a bit. Lighting is moving towards LED, and we'll be examining that. The latest elementary that we just bid last week is all LED, and we're moving towards LED throughout.
Thank you.
Other questions? And what, this is coming back from?
I could, Stacy, because I think she's.
Do you have one more? Sorry. In the resolution, there's a reference to an Exhibit D. Page 203, Section 1, "Council hereby adopts Development Commission's," blah, blah.
Findings of fact.
Set forth on Exhibit D. I don't see, I don't know where Exhibit D is.
So, again, this is probably a typo in the process of going from what we originally thought was going to be our first city council meeting, and having the additional Development Commission meeting, and all our exhibits were kind of changed as far as some of the labeling, and so I apologize for that oversight.
It's probably.
Like 352, maybe. Does it start on page 352?
And it's basically just making sure that the city council can find exactly where the conclusions, the findings, and the recommendations are, so let me just.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So.
But I can make sure.
Thank you very much. Yes, so it does start, it does start on page 352 of your packet, basically, the Development Commission's recommendations.
So, I'd like to piggyback on that. I was going to wait till we actually had a motion, we were talking about the resolution, but just since that's up right now, I, my sense was that page 352 is the record as of May 6th, and that, and the resolution is assuming there was only going to be one Development Commission meeting, so by the time, my assumption has been, after when I looked at this whole packet, that there's actually multiple references. It's not just what's on page 352 for the letter of May 6th. That's my guess, because there is a previous record from February as well, I think that's in there. So I think, I would really like, by the time, and maybe I'm wrong, but I would really like by the time, if we are to consider the resolution, if we could actually get here, you know, what that would be. It says, I'd like to amend, if we're going to consider it, amend the resolution for clarity. Thank you.
You mean amend this evening before we vote to approve it?
That's right. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is make a motion and allow additional discussion about the path forward. I would like to move that we approve Resolution Number 2015-09, approving the master site plan and site development permit for the Issaquah Middle School construction.
Second. And moved and seconded now.
I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if we could take a recess and have the staff see if they can make these amendments to the resolution, because otherwise, I don't believe it would be possible to take a vote this evening.
So before I decide on that, do, do we have the information on the amendments?
I'm sorry, I was distracted, and were we trying to get the correct exhibits?
Yes.
Okay. It's actually listed on page 365. This is.
I think the question, Amy, was, is can you look at the resolution that you put before us tonight and make corrections to it, so that when we discuss it and vote on it, that we have the corrected version before we vote this evening?
So I think I know how to handle this. I think I'll be able to, when we get there. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you. I have a legal question related to one of the alternatives to the recommendation. Additional conditions, and I think our city attorney spoke earlier about not being able to require things that are not caused by the applicant itself, if I understood your comments correctly. So my question is, in terms of conditions, there was discussion and questioning with regards to the noise being studied. I raised some issues about particulates and other health concerns. Are those potential conditions that could be placed on this MSP, or can they not be because they're not, per se, caused by the applicant itself?
Well, I was, I was speaking of mitigations, and the answer to that would be no, but, but, in the criteria for approval, there may be certain criteria that would fit under that category for which the city would have authority to condition. For instance, if the condition were, I don't, I haven't looked at them, and I have to look at the criteria, but if it said, you know, makes adequate provision for the health and safety, for instance, something like that, then, on the appropriate record and facts, then the city would be able to condition the proposal based on that criteria. I was speaking of mitigation, from a CEPA point of view mainly.
So, let me just make sure I understand. So for purposes of the motion before us, if I were to take Councilmember Martz's concern about whether the noise levels would be appropriately checked, mitigated, whatever verb we want to use, that's not something that's germane to the motion before us, but would later be included in criteria? I just want to make sure I understand.
No. If the council wanted to pursue that sort of requirement, then you would need to tie it both to the factual basis in the record, number one, and number two, to some of the approval criteria that you're required to consider. And if those, if that connection can be made, then that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming at this point in time that if we want to ask staff a further question, such as, and this group sitting up here is not as familiar with the criteria that the Development Commission would use when they're evaluating the project and setting conditions, so I'm assuming it's appropriate for a council member to ask staff if there is a criteria that would apply, so that they can consider whether or not to write a condition.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's up to you, Josh.
Yeah, I guess I would be interested in, I mean, there was talk earlier about, well, yeah, we're going to make sure about the noise, or that kind of, I just, I didn't have a significant confidence level in the response, both to Councilmember Martz's question, I'm not sure he did either, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you seemed to follow up a few times, and then, in terms of the question I asked as well, you know, which the answer seemed to suggest, well, Clark's there, and the kids, you know, are all, they still got two arms, two legs, so we're good. I just didn't feel quite the confidence level.
So, the way I see this moving towards a position of, A, we're going to determine that the noise levels at the perimeter of the school site are unacceptable. That's going to mean that the generator of the noise is beyond acceptable limits. If we find that the air quality at the school boundaries contain harmful materials, we're going to find that the generator is the source, and that the mitigation of both of those items is going to have to occur at the gun club or prior to the school district property.
Not necessarily, and it would not be appropriate for the city to consider mitigation of a third party that, you know, isn't present here, so.
Might I comment? Yeah, I appreciate the fact that that map is up there. One of the things we haven't talked about, on the right side of the screen, is a ball field. I've been there as a coach, as a parent, I've had young adults, including all four of my children, and other players under my watch play out there. It's closer than the building that we're even talking about. And there was another ball field, there's other fields too, that'll now be overlaid by the new building, and I've been out there quite a bit. I think, I'm just letting my other council members who are contemplating maybe making some addition here, but, yes, when a rifle fires, it's pretty loud. I just think that, given the historical precedent of the use of that, those grounds, and the fact that they were outdoors, and that, and there really hasn't, there haven't been consequences that we can tie to the record, then I just think we were reaching a little bit too far at this point to try to put a condition on this agreement at this time. I just, it's not in the record, and I think there is quite a bit of historical precedent of there not being an issue. It's just, it's not in the record.
So, I appreciate what you're saying, and let me be clear, I am a strong Second Amendment supporter, and this is not, my concerns about this are in no way directed at the Issaquah Sportsman Club, which has a long record in this community. But my concern is around a permanently, or a, an occupied, or occupied, I don't know if that's the right word, but a building that is intended to be occupied every day. There are laws associated with what noise can be allowed inside that building. I believe those rules are different than outdoors, right? But whatever the laws are in regards to indoor noise, if we are allowed to apply a criteria, if we are given the purview to apply such a criteria, I believe we should, because I believe that the standards for indoor occupancy, kids are going to be in there every day. It is different than an outdoor ball field. The elephant in the room is that the school district has property that's adjacent to a loud activity, right? And so if it's in our purview, I think we should just, I'm not asking, I don't think we should have any special standards, I just think we should say it should be checked before occupancy, and make sure that it meets the federal standards. Thanks. I still don't know if it's, if we're allowed, if it's, if that criteria, if we're allowed.
I think if you're talking about OSHA or WISHA standards for noise, those are state and/or federal regulations for which the city does not have the authority to enforce. We have authority to enforce our own codes, one of which is a noise ordinance, but as I indicated, that relates to the generator of noise, not the recipient. But yes, I'm pretty well convinced that OSHA and WISHA have standards that protect workers and students, or whatever, from harmful effects of noise, but OSHA and WISHA would enforce those, not the city.
I just do want to point out, for purposes of our record, that the record does discuss noise. The final staff report at page 58 lists noise as a bullet point under compatibility, although oddly, there's no comment provided, which is one of the things that troubled me, and Councilmember Martz raised the issue before I did on that point. There just wasn't any comment provided on mitigation for that or compatibility, and I believe compatibility under the municipal code relates to the site's compatibility with other surrounding sites. And here, again, we're talking about a surrounding site that's in proximity to a significant amount of noise. I mean, I wasn't on the council in 1955, when the elementary school was put there, so I can't speak to why it was put in that proximity, but we have this opportunity now to address this concern that's been raised, and I do believe, contrary to what was stated, the record does support concern over this particular issue.
So, just a point on compatibility, there is quite a bit of discussion on it in the checklist that the Development Commission uses, page 285. In the general definition, it doesn't talk about compatibility with regards to noise at all. It talks about a lot of other characteristics for both man-made and natural elements that are adjacent to it. And it does have a small section that talks about noise that the residents may experience that may be different due to bus traffic compared. But I actually don't think that was in the, within the purview of the Development Commission, as much as I think the concerns that both of you have expressed are good concerns, I'm not sure that there is anything in the record that would allow us to condition it differently.
But doesn't it, I'm sorry, but doesn't it say, right in that paragraph on page 286, it refers to the Sportsman Gun Club noise?
Mm-hmm. It can often be heard during school, but it doesn't, the definition of how you define whether or not these two uses are compatible up at the top, doesn't include noise particularly as something that you could condition with. It's a very general definition, it talks about, include but are not limited to color, signage, lighting, size, scale, mass, architectural style, and design, and you could go and say, okay, that may include noise as well. And they did discuss it below, but I, I'm not really seeing much that you can do, and I think I'm sort of understanding the concern is that this is a public facility, it's a school facility, and just because we put it there once doesn't mean that it belongs there twice, but I'm not sure I'm convinced that there's something that we actually can practically do, other than tell the school district, we really think you ought to. I don't know that we can do it in this permit.
Interesting discussion.
I'm still, I'm still not clear whether we've been told that we have the legal authority to consider a condition that would be around noise.
Comment?
I think, I think the discussion's been good, because one of the criteria is that the proposed development is designed and oriented to be compatible with existing permitted land uses. So, if this permitted use, or the school, is not compatible with existing permitted land uses, including the gun club, which is a permitted land use, grandfathered, but permitted, then, conditions designed to make the school compatible would be within the city's authority, provided there's a sufficient factual basis for the conditions. Now, I haven't heard what specifically is being proposed, so it would depend on what that is, and, you know, to the extent I've heard talk about taking measurements of noise and/or particulates. and/or particulates, that's a condition, but I've also heard, just from the discussion, that due to the necessity for openings in the building and so on and so forth, there may not be a lot that the school can reasonably do, even if there were noise that exceeded a certain standard. So, again, I think the council could discuss what the specifics are, and then we can, you can ask the staff if there's a sufficient factual basis. If not, then one of the options for the council is to remand to the Development Commission to conduct additional public hearings on a specific issue, and a record can be developed at that point. So that is an option as well.
Thank you, Wayne. Clarification, so though the gun club is not inside our jurisdiction, that would still apply?
Right, I don't, again, this is sort of a summary, but I don't believe that it's limited to being within the city or without the city, just surrounding land uses.
Okay, so our code would, is considering land uses outside the city with that?
Right, compatibility, somebody wants to put a certain use on this piece of property in the city, and one of the criteria is whether that use is compatible with surrounding uses. You know, if somebody wanted to put a, you know, a train whistle manufacturing facility that would test things every half hour, you'd probably say, that's not compatible with surrounding residential uses, even if they were in the county. So that's a trivial, silly example, but yes, whether it's in the city or outside the county, compatibility of surrounding uses is, is one of the criteria.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that clarification, because I read all of this just assuming it was compatible inside the city, it was the only criterion.
Other questions or discussion?
Well, okay, so now, so there's a, it's acceptable to discuss a potential condition. I, this is, you know, this is where, maybe I wish I was a lawyer, this issue about whether we can enforce somebody else's standards, I get that that would be the next hurdle in this conversation, because I know there are federal standards for indoor noise. I know it because I used to be employed by a company that routinely generated loud noise, because we did energetic systems testing in the rocket business, and we had an indoor engine test stand in Kent, Washington. I think that we should look for a way to make sure that this gets tested before the building gets occupied. I think it's fine that there's a gun club just outside the city, I think it's fine that the school wants to build in this location, but there's been a rise of high-power rounds, the .338, which I know is used at the range, is only, only dates in the mid-'80s. This is a more recent phenomenon, some of these large bore rounds. The good news is, they don't use the .50 caliber BMG, which is substantially louder at the range, but, so I don't, I don't know what to do, but it seems that...
There is, there's, there's a motion on the floor that has been seconded.
So I'm looking to potentially amend that, and I don't know exactly what to amend it with, given that the legal advice that we've gotten, that we can't enforce federal standards. If somebody told me that as part of the commissioning of this building, those things were going to get tested because it's the federal law, then I wouldn't have any concerns, but I haven't heard that this evening.
So I may, or may, I make a recommendation, Deputy President Goodman has made a suggestion that maybe, that member, councilmember Cher and Martz, we take a little timeout and meet with staff, where you can have a discussion and come forward with a specific...
Proposal.
Proposal or amendment for the council. Rather than us all sitting here and you trying to hash it out, I mean, can we take...
Well, a very sensible suggestion, but appearance of fairness requires that everyone hear everything at the same time and it be in a public session, so I'm sorry to raise that, but, but it is a process. So I think now is the time to ask staff questions about this, including the applicant, and maybe, you know, I would hope that OSHA and WISHA, or WISHA mainly, would come in and do inspections in the schools on a periodic basis. I don't know, I would hope they do, but maybe we can have some discussion about that.
The applicant, applicant, yes.
I was just going to ask a question.
At the microphone.
That, germane to the current discussion, would the existing upper playfields, the existing Clark playfield and the existing Clark Elementary be considered compatible uses if they continue to exist in their current locations?
Well, that's not the question, because they already exist and you're not seeking a permit for them, so the city has no authority about the existing uses. You're proposing a new use, or a new building and new structures, that is what the city has authority over, not what's there now or what might have been there in the past.
Okay.
Understood.
I just have a question. So timeline-wise, you know, I'm at a bit of an impasse myself, and I can't think that quickly on the fly about this sort of significant issue or the others that I raised. You know, I understand there is a fairly aggressive schedule to move this forward. I wasn't on Land and Shore, I might have brought these issues up at that time. I, you know, we're not able to talk with other council members about this ahead of time because it's quasi-judicial, so there is no opportunity other than any questions that might come up with staff, but it's a bit of a silo effect when I'm considering this. Again, I still think the record supports this very issue, there were citizen comments in the record concerning mitigation for noise with removal of trees and other things, I mean, this goes a little even beyond that, because we're talking about the interior of the buildings here. Is there a way to consider having this, I don't know when Land and Shore's next meeting is, or does it have to get remanded to the DC for them to look at this? Or is it something that the committee can take up and then bring it back to our next council meeting?
Well, if you want additional consideration of the record as it exists, that could be done in committee. If you want, if, if it, if the record needs to be added to with additional facts, that would have to go back to the Development Commission for an additional public hearing.
My personal feeling is that it is supported by the record, and so I don't believe that further factual findings are necessary on the issue. I'm just thinking about a way that these discussions can happen in an open public setting that's not a full city council meeting, and the committees are best suited for getting into the minutia of these types of issues and discussing directly with staff. I don't know when Land and Shore is meeting next, or how that could affect the ultimate timeline of the proceedings, but there's definitely been enough discussion generated this evening that I would at least raise that question for consideration.
The Land and Shore meets tomorrow, but it seems the issue that the two of you are struggling with is, it's not even knowing what questions to ask to get some draft language for a condition. So you're thinking the information is there, it's more about crafting a new condition, and that is not something that we have experience with. So we can either slog on tonight and continue to ask staff questions, and, but we do have to come up with the language of what that draft condition would be, and I'm not sure what you would get sending it back to Land and Shore, if we would be able to, well, we definitely couldn't review any new information, but I'm not sure that we would be able to craft conditions based on the record that would satisfy what you're looking at. So I'm, I'm a little bit stuck right now. I almost feel like we should be doing it here this evening.
So, let me just toss out an idea based on what I've heard, maybe to get us going, narrow down what it is that you're looking for. So if compatibility with adjacent land uses is the issue, are you looking for, and this is just kind of general, to ensure that, that the proposal is compatible with the Sportsman's Club, in particular, that potential health and safety issues are addressed, namely lead and noise, and that would some sort of testing to ensure that the issues of lead and noise meet some sort of government standards, whatever they are?
Yes.
It's a nail on the nail.
But I think, I think the rub is in what's, what those standards are, and whether, and I don't know if we have to name standards, but then the problem becomes the, the standards that are out there, unless the city has indoor noise standards already, which I don't believe they do, because I...
Would you be comfortable with the city determining that?
If applicable standards have been met.
That the relevant standards have been met?
Well, no.
I'm just tossing out...
The question is, what are relevant standards?
Well, let me, let me ask you this. If there were a condition to the effect that the school district would be required to meet state and/or federal noise, indoor noise, and lead for, you know, air standards, if that were a condition, would that be sufficient?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Could you say that again, Wayne? I'm sorry, we're confirming.
Okay, that the, there would be a new condition to say the school district would be required to meet relevant state and/or federal indoor noise and indoor air quality standards.
If we are allowed to, to suggest such a condition that exactly meets my concern, and I would, I would move such a condition be added to this bill.
So we're asking them to comply with standards they already have to comply with?
Yes.
That I was worried about. Sorry.
So, maybe we could take five minutes and discuss with the, administration would discuss with the school district, the...
While we sit here.
Well, just take a five-minute break, or maybe we could go outside.
Just a second. I would like to get the appropriate exhibit, I think we have that, I'd like to get that out of the way first, and then we can take a short recess.
You know, I'm good, I think we just have to make reference to the record of the Development Commission meeting in February, specific date, and May, specific date, and I think that is, I think that is, that's all we need to do. It's not Exhibit D, but it is the public record of the Development Commission meetings in February and May. As the signer of the resolution, I'm going to be happy with that.
I just wanted to add, so the MSP deals with zoning of the site. We still have to issue a building permit, and so most of the concerns that I've heard have been around the interior of the building permit. And so one of the things that you could consider is directing staff to condition the building permit so that we can get the zoning done, you know, this evening, if council so decided to vote on that. And then we can do some additional research as may be required with that condition that you talked about, they're going to have to comply with the federal and state laws on noise inside of the building, and that would give us some additional time, you know, through the building permit process to make sure that they meet those conditions, and they'll have to, you know, make that determination in terms of how the building's designed and appropriately screened with the, you know, to deal with the noise that would be generated from that.
Are you separating the MSP from the SDP? Because it could be a condition of the SDP.
Well, yeah, they're basically the same, so I think Bob is saying that we can do, we can condition, we can, you can make a condition that before the building permit is issued, that these issues be resolved. So that's another option.
Don't think about that, and so...
Individually.
I believe that the resolution in Section 1, it should state...
So, with regards to, actually, Section 2, the only edit that I would like to call out is, instead of referring to Exhibit D, it's actually Exhibit G, which is shown on page 365. And just as a clarification, Exhibit D was incorporated into Exhibit G. We were trying to simplify things for the city council. This is a little tricky, because we weren't expecting a two-step, you know, development of findings and facts, so everything that was in Exhibit D was also reflected in Exhibit G, with the additional exhibits and information from the second public hearing.
Okay. Okay. So we're going to take a five-minute recess, we'll be back here at 9:30.[1504.99] We are back in session at 9:30. During our brief recess, staff developed a new condition, which is on the slide. We have a motion before us, continued discussion, questions or.
Is someone going to move this?
I was just.
I, Councilmember Martz.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move a new condition be added. The applicant shall comply with relevant state and/or federal indoor noise requirements and indoor air quality requirements.
Second.
And move, well, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Yes.
I would propose a bit of wordsmithing. I think the concern is that we have a new building going up. We don't want to talk about the old building and what's going on. We want to know that the manner in which the new structure is being constructed, before it's built, we want to know that it will comply. So I would suggest applicant shall demonstrate compliance with relevant state and/or federal indoor noise requirements and indoor quality requirements or proposed design modifications to ensure, because the building's not built. Can't go in it now and measure, but we want to know that what they're putting on the table will meet. Don't want it to be built and then go measure and say, you know what, there is a little problem here. So I think that's what you're trying to get at. That if they, if it's not going to work, let's fix it before we actually build it. Let's make it work.
Could you, can you repeat those or just help me put the other one up there so we.
Applicant shall demonstrate compliance with relevant state.
Do you see the second one?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Compliance with. Or recommend proposed design alterations to ensure compliance. What's that? So demonstrate that your design is going to work. You're going to have to, we have to know that it's going to meet those standards before you build it, or you're going to have to tell us that you're going to change something, change windows, change wall materials, change something. Get it what you want? Recommend proposed design.
Okay, that's good.
Or recommend.
I didn't quite get that last phrase, I think.
Or recommend, instead of recommendation, proposed design modifications to ensure compliance with the standards. And that's a suggestion. It's like not in your brain.
That's why I'm keeping both of them up there, so.
I withdraw my previous amendment.
You can actually just agree to the changes.
Oh, Ken, I'm sorry. I agree to the changes as proposed by my fellow councilmember, Paulie.
And I second that because I suggested.
Questions or discussion on the.
I did a question. So this started out as not only about these issues, but also about compatibility with nearby land uses. So that's, this is silent on that, and I just, so, does that matter?
I don't know. I think what we're trying to say is that we have a use. It's maybe non-conforming, but it's permitted, grandfathered in, whatever you want to call it. And if we're going to change something on the property, which putting a new school is a change, we want to make sure it complies with that existing grandfathered non-conforming use.
Okay, so that's the, that's kind of the reason for this condition, but it's not part of the condition.
I mean, these are the only two aspects of the use that came up in the discussion tonight was noise and lead.
There is a new proposed condition that has been proposed and seconded. Additional questions or discussion?
Yes.
May I speak to it first as the, as the author of the amendment?
Okay.
All right. So I just want to be clear. I think we should do this because I think it acknowledges that we have a somewhat unique situation. We have a, we have an entity that is, that is outside of our jurisdiction, but that is legally doing business, but nature of this school means that we want to be extra diligent to make sure that the situation is safe for everybody involved. And so that if somebody comes to me five years from now and says, why did you allow a school to be put next to the gun range? I can say, because we made sure it was going to be safe for the kids. We did. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm interested in Paul's question after we address this motion. I wanted to revisit the when on this. Earlier discussions were at certificate of occupancy, but our city attorney had brought up the issuance of a building permit and compatible with, I think, what Councilmember Paulie was saying, is that we don't want to go down a path and build a whole school and then find out it's not compatible. So I would think that would protect all parties if we considered adding at issuance, prior to issuance of a building permit at this point. Does that sound good to others?
The proposer and the secondary agree? Which language? I'm okay.
Point of, point of order on the request to amend. Should the words prior to the issuance of the building permit be placed at the beginning of the sentence so that it modifies the entirety of the sentence as opposed to the second part of the clause?
Ooh.
Otherwise, the way it's currently written could be construed that the proposed design modifications only be done prior to issuance of the permit, but not the demonstration of compliance.
I think he's right. Okay, that's, yeah, Josh, I would agree with you that if you preceded the sentence with prior to the issuance, then everything would follow, and that would be in keeping with the spirit.
Thank you.
So it looks good.
So this does not limit compliant, does not limit this to the issues that we were talking about, lead and firing noise?
It's like at Levens' at indoor noise requirements and indoor air quality.
So I think the purpose of this was to make sure that it was compatible. And so we, I think we should probably, I think, should probably add something about the purpose of compatibility with the sportsman's club or something, because that's, no?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, anyway, that's my thought, is it doesn't, it's not limited to what we were discussing before.
So there was a condition that was placed up there that, to add. We've been doing some wordsmithing, and I sort of feel like we're in a little bit of a do-loop right now, to be honest. We started out being concerned about air quality, and we started out being concerned about noise levels and were they compliant. And I understand all of, you know, I understand that. But we have an amendment to the motion that would add an additional that has gone through several iterations of wordsmithing.
We're close.
We're, we may be close. I hope we are close. Are we ready to call the question on the amendment?
I'm sorry, I just.
Been waiting to make a comment, please.
Go ahead, I guess.
I'd like a question of the applicant. Is, can I just get your read on if this is anything, is it add anything? Is it do anything different than you would do during your normal course as you would expect it to build this building?
We're going to meet federal and state requirements for indoor environmental quality issues. What this is calling for is some design calculations to show that the sound levels at the exterior are going to be mitigated by the wall construction and its fenestration to meet indoor noise level requirements. I don't see that, other than an extra step on the design side for air quality, we're going to have to go out and measure the existing air quality and see if it's feasible to say that that's compatible with indoor air quality requirements. We have operable windows, so if you open the windows, the existing air quality is going to have to be compatible and meet existing, you know, federal and state requirements.
I just wanted to clarify further with Councilmember Goodman, her question about, she made a statement about that this is broader than the specifics of.
Compatibility.
Right. And does that mean that you don't support the amendment? And if so, is there alternate language that you feel you would need in order to support this amendment?
I think my comment was that I would, I would prefer to see it specific enough to meet your, your, Josh's concerns. So for example, if you said, if it was said, prior to issuance of the building permit, comma, and for the purpose of ensuring the proposed development is designed and oriented to be compatible with Issaquah Sportsman's Club, comma.
Addressed.
Then the applicant shall demonstrate. That shows, that shows specifically what, what the condition is trying to address?
And the context around it.
Context.
I'm sorry, I can't type as fast as she talks.
And for the purpose of ensuring that the proposed development is designed and oriented to be compatible with the existing Issaquah Sportsman's Club, comma. Well, I'm copying, I mean, I read this compatibility. You can take out oriented if you want to, but, but the point was, if you, so if, if you're somebody who's not here, you have no idea why this is in there unless you add that phrase. It's for dealing with issues concerning the gun club.
Mm-hmm.
May I ask if the city's legal counsel believes that the addition of that phrase changes the.
Anything?
Anything on.
No, I think it narrows.
Missibility.
Councilmember Goodman's correct. The motion as proposed originally was broader than that. I think the staff understands what the council's intent, if this were to pass, would be, and not, for instance, airplane noise going over or something like that.
As the originator of the amendment, I'm comfortable with this addition then.
Second to the amendment, I'm comfortable with the addition.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of acting on the amendment as shown on the slide signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously.
Didn't get asked the question.
I thought he heard seven yays.
The amendment passes six to one with President Winterstein in opposition. Moving now to the main motion.
Mr. Mayor, can, do we get to see the amended language of the ordinance since there was some changes? Or does everybody comfortable that they understand the resolution? Sorry. There was some talk about references to different.
Before, before we've recessed, we changed Section 2 of the resolution that's set forth in the Development Commission's finding of fact conclusions and recommendations shown on Page 365, which references the two Development Commission meetings, one in February and one in May.
If I may, I think really for clarifying, 360, that's the whole packet. This agenda bill is 235 pages long, so, and this is, this is Exhibit G, and I think that meets the spirit and the intent, and all we have to do is change the reference. So I'm proposing that we change the wording to Exhibit G.
Where it said Exhibit B on Page.
No, where it said Exhibit D.
It said Exhibit D on Page 202? No.
203.
203? Okay. And that was the only change that was required?
Mm-hmm.
There's no question?
So just in general, just a general comment, it's tough when you sit up here and everybody's got deadlines, and yet in the record, there is a five-minute, five-month delay, or roughly. I mean, it's in the schedule there itself. So I just, just want everybody to understand that, when, you know, boy, you know, we're, we're not going to have this done, we're not going to have this done, we kind of do it this way. Well, you know, there was five, something like, almost five months. It's in the presentation today about the schedule, when things were. So it is very difficult when you sit up here in the council and, and you want to serve. We want to be in service. People are doing the right things for the right reasons, and it was originally applied for, in May of 2014, and so quite a long a time before it, before it came back. And then it was, and then it was on hold. So it's, I really feel like we're in a tough position. I just hope everybody can appreciate, you know, how difficult that is when you want to, you want to do the right thing, and yet there's this pressure of time. It's not a fun way to operate. The other thing, the only other comment about this is I intend to support this motion this evening, is that I think the whole, I think the compatibility with adjacent uses is a very, very important topic. There was precedence, this high school's been in that vicinity, the most, the, all the packet really talks about compatible uses with the, with the nearby neighborhood, and I get that. So we're putting a larger building that generates more traffic, but we've decided that that is okay for this particular setting, and I think there's some historical precedence of that, and we're just conforming to the other kind of non-conform, allowed non-conformity. But I think going forward, I think just in general, that, that, you know, Issaquah is an evolving city. There is, and there has been very significant changes in our comprehensive plan. We have subarea plans that have intended uses, and even our core area, the, this central Issaquah area is, within our comprehensive plan, is intended to be, you know, you know, toward urban, semi-urban setting. And I, and I think, you know, going forward, I think any new potential questions about school facilities, I'm hoping we're extremely sensitive to land use and decisions and zoning that not only this council, but hundreds of our citizens with thousands of hours of consideration have put into on how we want to see our city evolve. So this is, this question in front of us today is about confirmation, how it conforms, you know, in the neighborhood where it is. And I think as a general question, long-term, I think the, the, the land use and the comprehensive planning of the city will continue to be honored and considered for all future buildings or, you know, done by the school district. So that was just a point I wanted to make, but otherwise, you know, I think the, you know, I think our school district works very hard to meet, it's got a, it's duty-bound to provide education for the residents that live here. I think they do a fantastic job. Facilities is a key part of it. Planning is a key part of that. This is a very aggressive move. It has impacts on us. We have existing neighborhoods, we're limited by roads here, and I think our, our citizens and our businesses and our, and our neighbors who pass through Issaquah will be impacted, you know, during the build-out of this. It's kind of the price we have to pay. I accept that, but, you know, when I step back and think about, you know, the, what was done for the high school, now it's being done for the middle school, and obviously for Tiger Mountain and Clark Elementary as they sit today, as they're going to be changed, you know, I, I have nothing but respect for the people who plan and execute that. I'm glad we could work together, you know, toward this end, and I'm going to be supporting this bill this evening. Josh?
Thanks, Mayor. So just a few concluding thoughts as well. You know, I do, I do find that the zoning is appropriate under CFF based on the record presented, given the other use of facilities within the same area with the same zoning. And so for those reasons, it does appear to comply with the requirements in 1807 of the municipal code based on the findings of fact and conclusions that are presented before us. That being said, you know, I mentioned earlier, I'm not particularly swayed by the argument that because Clark or Tiger Mountain is there, that somehow this development, there's, there's no problem because we've already got kids attending classes in the vicinity. You know, I'm sure in 1955, when Clark was built, folks were picking up their kids using leaded gas and smoking cigarettes in their cars. It doesn't mean that nowadays we would approve of either of those things. So I think it was, it was a great exercise that we did this evening to include the additional condition, that amendment, and I really appreciate the teamwork of the council that was put into coming up with the right wording for that. I would just say, though, that, you know, as a parent and as a concerned citizen in the community, I think these issues that were brought up should be appropriately studied and reported to parents of students who will be going to Issaquah Middle School. I think, you know, it's. I, I think, you know, it's one thing to say you're meeting standards, it's another to assure the community that you're exceeding standards and that you're actually ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of our children, the 1,100 children approximately who will be going to this school. And, you know, if it were up to me, I wouldn't put a school in that location. I, is this the best site for where the middle school could be? No, I don't think it is. But is it an appropriate site under the requirements of our master site plan code, which I'm not sure necessarily contemplated these issues that we've addressed this evening? And I think that was a lot of the, the consternation that we had, is that we're working in the constraints of a limited record and a code that doesn't really specifically address the issues that were raised. I also, lastly, wanna just say, we didn't talk too much about design, other than the, the blank walls. You know, when Swedish was building their hospital in the Highlands, their guiding principle was not a hospital, making it look like it's not a hospital. Well, personally, I don't think this looks like a school, I'd say it's not a school. I'm not sure what it looks like. It kinda looks like, to me, again, this is my personal view, we can argue about aesthetics, it kinda looks like a hotel where you'd hold a business conference. I'm not terribly impressed by the design, but, you know, it's in the eye of the beholder. I just don't think it's very welcoming or kid-friendly from the pictures I saw, this sort of yellow tan two-story building with what looks like a carport. I know it's not a carport, but that reminds me of hotel. So, you know, we could argue about design, and, and everybody's got their own aesthetic, but, you know, kid-friendly, safe, I mean, that's what we want, as parents and as council members, that's what we wanna see. And, you know, I hope, moving forward, that there will continue to be good coordination with the school district as our development increases in the city, making sure that both design and both capacity-wise, that our future schools take our development issues into account as well, and I know at our, our retreat, we'll be talking about that as well, goal that both Naina and I had put forward. So, I think, you know, in sum, this satisfies 1807, I'm satisfied, based on the constrained record before us, that there is sufficient cause to approve the master site plan, and I'll be supporting this vote this evening with the concerns and comments that I hope the district takes back to the school board and to the parents and those who are the responsible folks as this process moves forward. Thank you.
Hold on. Number? I, I would like to thank Mr. Mayor, Council President Winterstein, staff, and Director Crawford from the school district. You know, this, these quasi-judicial proceedings are, for those of you at home, a very, very interesting process. I've said many times that this council oftentimes appears on this day as, as if we don't have any difference of opinions, and I've said that that's usually because they get hammered out in committee, and it's why the last land and shore meeting was four hours long, and there's a continuance for it for tomorrow night. And I hope people see this discussion this evening as, as an example of, of, of how that's true. It was, it was somewhat messy, we wound up with a six to one where reasonable people could disagree on this issue, having looked at all the evidence, and so, but I'm, I'm extremely happy that we're able to come up with something that addressed several of our concerns. And as a final thought, I just wanna say, I also hope people at home don't take this in, in any way as any sort of criticism of, of the professionalism or capability of the Issaquah School District. Issaquah High School is beautiful, and I say that as a parent who has a junior there and has an eighth grader who will be in, a high school student next year. One of the reasons that it's beautiful is not just the, the architecture and the views, but the fact that it was, at the time, built the lowest per square foot costs of any high school on the east side. And so, please do not, I hope no one takes this as any criticism of the district, but rather, this process this evening is messy, and I didn't have any chance to vet any of these concerns before this evening. Thank you.
Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple comments as well. I'm gonna support the agenda bill tonight, but I did want to state that even with the aggressive timeline that was proposed, and the city really trying to work with the applicant to make sure our process fit in, I am pleased that land and shore, after a lot of deliberation, did remand it back to the Development Commission, because I think in doing so, it ensured that the public was able to comment on new information that was entered into the record, but that they were originally not able to make comments on. And that was the final determination of nonsignificance and the traffic study, and that is a very important part of the process, in my mind. Also, I, the remand allowed the Development Commission to look at two design issues that originally were sent up to council, and I really don't believe council is the place for us to be looking at design issues in, in a sense, and creating those conditions for both blank walls and parking lot layouts, those are well within the purview of the Development Commission, and the remand allowed the Development Commission to finish their work, in my mind, on those two, and present us with a set of conditions that was very, very complete. Also, the remand allowed the clarification on what the actual impacts would be to the wetland buffers, and we have a lot of citizens out there who repeatedly come to meetings and wanna know about what's going on to wetlands or their buffers and how we're handling it. So, that allowed that issue to come back and get a really clear look at it. I wanted to thank all of the council members tonight, 'cause even though we do do most of our work in committee, as Councilmember Mart said, this one, just doing, based on the process, meant you all had to go and do the exact same amount of work. You had to go back and look at this very, very lengthy record, and there was also video that could be viewed, and so, we did our work, the three committee members, but you all had to go back and do that, and that is, that's what comes with this process, and so I appreciate it, just based on your questions tonight, the concerns that were brought forward, and the extra condition that was written, you really all did your homework, and that was, that's fantastic. We got a better result because of that process. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna be supporting this agenda bill as well, I have a couple of comments to make. The reason I supported the amendment regarding the Sportsman's Club is because I think it's very easy for us to become used to where the, the school is located, adjacent to the gun club. And I don't, I don't agree with the idea that just because it's been there for decades and decades means that it's, it should always be there. I don't know what the best location is, that's not, that's not for me to decide, but I do think it's a recognition that we should, we should keep that in mind, and I'm glad that we, that we have that acknowledged in the record, that we recognize that this is at, at least a very odd situation. And at the same time, as Councilmember Mart said, this community is blessed with really beautiful schools, facilities, we are very lucky to have the, to have the schools that we have, to have the, the school district that we have, we're very lucky. A lot of us moved here because of the schools, we contribute to this wonderful growth because we moved here, because of the schools, and so, even though we have an odd location for one school, we do have very fabulous facilities all around. The, the one thing that does trouble me about the process is about the, the details about the, the traffic mitigations that still need to be done. I know there was a mention of, this is where we were when we built the Issaquah High School, and we still had some things to finalize. Other than that, I'm not familiar with that, but other than that, I'm not familiar with any approvals, since I've been on council, where we save those details for later, after the public review. I've been involved in several development agreements and several other developments, and I just don't recall that that was the process. The reason it bothers me is because traffic is a very critical item in our community, you know, everybody knows that, it's the number one issue for everybody, and so I think the public deserves to know exactly what is being planned, and also entitled to comment on exactly what is being planned. I think the public process serves a very important purpose, it helps drive better deliberation, it helps us come up with other ideas, and it also checks us, it checks us to make sure that we're doing the appropriate thing. So, I'm, I'm troubled by that, I'm not gonna vote no because of it, but I just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not crazy about it, I'm not happy about it. So, I wish that was different, and I hope that we don't have to, I hope we keep that in mind in the future.
Anyone else?
Make it really, yes. Real quick, I also wanted to thank, if I failed to mention them earlier, the members of the Development Commission. That's, that's a heck of a job that they do for us.
Five hours.
And more than once. It's, and if, and if any existing prior or potential future Development Commission member wondered about the criticality of their work and their contribution of actually shaping policy and outcome that comes around here, just take a look at this. It's, it's very significant, I was very dependent upon, well, we had to be, we were completely dependent upon both the record, that record that was created, both some materials submitted from the applicant, provided by staff, and the discussion that was held and facilitated, you know, by the Development Commission. So, I wanted to thank, you know, all of the members, I just wanted to take a moment to make sure that was publicly acknowledged, the, my gratitude for their work as well.
Anyone else? And I'm assuming you're ready to vote, all those in favor for approving Resolution Number 2015 dash 09 as amended, approving the master site plan and site development permit for the Issaquah Middle School construction with additional conditions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. That concludes our regular business item, we'll move now to, for good of the order.
It just so happens that my, my thing I wanna discuss actually has to do with schools, you know, there has, I was a member, I was the, our city's representative on the school district's bond committee, and that committee did approve a proposal for items on a bond that is put forth by the superintendent, and so, the superintendent's preparing a package to take to the board of directors of the school, the school directors, and so, that process is, is unfolding. And, and items that are on that include the construction of a fourth high school within the school district, a new middle school, a couple of elementary schools. This was not a discussion about boundary, it was, and those specific locations have been identified, and, and, and so, that is, you know, that is still in front of, you know, should this bond, you know, go to the public, and should it be passed, then that's when, you know, I think those decisions will be made. And I thought it was really important, some of the information that was shared there, one that really struck me, and it's the reason I made my comments earlier this evening about compatibleness, is that, that, and, and specifically, when I think about the central Issaquah area, and all the work that some, our predecessors and existing people active on commissions on this council put into shaping the central Issaquah plan, that where there really was a vision, you know, for that part of the city. And part of that vision has to do, it also includes following the edict of, or, yeah, of the, of the GMA, the Growth Management Act, that we preserve existing neighborhoods, and, and that was a key goal of the central, it's reflected in our comprehensive plan, it's reflected in our goal behind, of the central Issaquah plan as well. And that's, and I think that it's, you know, the district has, it must be tough to run this school district, they've got some rural settings, and they have, guess what, one of their municipalities within the district has a vision for an urban center within that. Those are, those are really kind of, you know, that would be tough, I think, to have to manage one product, one service, and do it consistently and be compatible with both your rural aspects and, and one that's aiming to be urban, at least in its core. And, and so, but I think that's something that's important, and I don't want it to be missed, that this process is going forward with the superintendent and the school board, and that I think it's, it would be my, so I'm actually getting toward an ask of this council in the form of a letter, that, that I think there are, to assist with the decision-making process, to, to make sure that we, as a municipality and as a member, you know, within the school district, speak, communicate to the superintendent and the school board about our, you know, the value that we, of our comprehensive plan, especially the central Issaquah area, of the character and the direction and what that means. You know, there's a, there is a, so there were some comments during these meetings about building high schools similar to the existing high schools within the school district, and, well, those are 40 acres, or 35 to 40 acres, and, and, and that sounds great, but it's not, it, it's, it may or may not be compatible with an urban-type vision for something like our central area, and who knows? I'm not saying, nobody knows whether or not a school's gonna be there or not, but I think it's very important that we communicate and that the superintendent, the school board are very familiar, you know, with this vision we have for this part of town. And, and we've discussed in leadership the possibility of, of us communicating that desire and, and, and actually going, you know, to the school board and having, and, and actually formally delivering this communication. And so, you know, so the, the, one thing, kinda honoring our land use and our vision and our plan for our community and as well as our central area, and so that, should that area be the best place, that we can work together and to honor, you know, all the work that we and others have done and that are reflected in our comprehensive plan and our vision for the central area. And so, that would be, that would be one topic of conversation, and I think, and, well, that's, that's the primary topic of conversation, and I, I just wanted to throw it out there just for a kinda conversation among my peers here on the council, about the interest in us actually, as a council, formally communicating via a letter, you know, to our, to our representatives at the school district, you know, that type of message.
Josh?
I'd, I'd love to see what the letter says, but it sounds like I'll at least have another vote for my goal on June 6th, it ties in very nicely with the communication, so...
Yeah, it really does. Any other comments? Yeah, Tom?
I think clarity is a good thing, and I think that, I think, I think it would be good to, to make clear, our central Issaquah plan is a, is a large complicated document, and I think the, the very act of trying to distill down the core of what it represents, I think would be useful to share with the school board members who have a lot of different issues on their plate, and may not have read the entirety of the central Issaquah plan. So, I, I think it's a great idea.
Naina?
Thank you, Paul. I too had a goal for our retreat that I'm looking forward to discussing, and it seems to be the other side of this, in that to be supportive and helpful to the school, we do have floor ratios and other standards and things that are in the central Issaquah plan that prohibit uses or development in the central Issaquah area that aren't up to the standards that we have. Conveying that information early, and if they don't already have it, would be helpful to them, but rather than staking a claim and saying, hey, I wanna be careful that you're not gonna screw up our central Issaquah plan, I wanna say, the central Issaquah plan is screaming for schools because it's bringing housing into a district that's mostly commercial, and I wanna help them with that.
Yeah, and I, and I really do mean to convey that, in that, you know, I think, that's why, there's a lot of language in this item tonight, where it's about compatible uses. And, and I can see our vision for the central area being very attractive to people, and, and even, and, and school buildings that can kinda conformed with that vision could be very attractive. And, and that's really, that's really the point. I think it's, let, you know, just communicate it clearly, communicate earlier that, that this is, should that turn out to be the area that makes the most sense, then, then, you know, this is, this is what we hope we can do together in this area, rather than just, than bringing it around to their, everybody's attention after the fact. So, I can, I'll have some, in the first regular business meeting of, of June, I'll have a draft for us to consider. That was my item for the good of the order, thank you.
Any other good of the order this evening? Mary Lou?
I just wanted to tell the rest of the council members that Councilmember Goodman and myself went to Fire Ops 101, which is a course that our Eastside Fire and Rescue Union local puts on once in a while, I don't think it's every year. It was a, it was a demonstration of several scenarios and our capabilities and how our crews respond, and it was very informative. I'm not sure if we told you guys about it or not, gave you the opportunity, but alternates to our directors can go, as well as other council members. So, next year, if they do it again, which they're talking about, we'll make sure we bring it here, because there is a, a lot to see, and they also try and schedule it near the end of the day to make it available to as many council members as possible. It's quite good.
Over.
As a council member who is
As a council member who is not up for reelection this year, I just want to thank all the members, or all the residents of Izuaq who chose to submit their applications for city council positions for this fall. Last election, we had four people for four positions. This election, we have nine people for three positions. So, it's just a measure of citizen activism that we have such a robust response from the community. Thank you.
And anyone else for good of the order this evening? Seeing none, then we are adjourned at 10:11.